Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the three of the home meeting for Tuesday, May 60. How can we follow the piece of law? But the home. We have an agenda in front of council. Motion to approve, the committee, approved by councillor Kent. First step is a Cleveland commercial height workshop. And please, anyone who's in the audience would like to join us for this. I know one of the proponents for the project, we're kind of using a bikini pig is here, so please, I invite you to the table. Anyone else?
I want to produce.
Jason. So, whatever ready.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Elaine, our planner, working on this project.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Elaine Naesby, and I am a planner with Development Services. Today, I'm presenting an item titled "Cleveland Commercial Height." And as the mayor mentioned, Sabrina Golly, the development manager with Day Who is here to help present this as well. So, the goal with today's presentation is staff is asking council, should the district revisit the vision outlined in the draft Downtown Neighborhood Plan for building heights on Cleveland Avenue? And should staff explore tools for regulating higher building heights? An overview of this afternoon's presentation, first, we're going to look at policy and regulations. The objectives, what do we want to achieve with this? A few precedents, the case study with Sabrina, and next steps. So, the process that staff envisions related to discussing and determining maximum height of buildings on Cleveland is engagement with council and with the community and property owners on Cleveland. Initially, we will look at two different case studies. There's two properties on Cleveland that are going through rezoning applications, so they're not currently zoned to the downtown C4 zone. So, today is one case study. The second case study is the Park West site, South Cleveland. So, following those two case studies with council, staff will engage with the public and property owners, and then report back to council with potential proposed bylaw amendments. So, the policy. Policy since at least 2005 has indicated a maximum two-story height for commercial buildings on Cleveland Avenue. So, the 2005 Downtown Squamish Concept Plan, the draft Downtown Neighborhood Plan, the 2008, 2014, and 2016 versions, and the official community plan, just out on Thursday, so the 2017 discussion draft, they all indicate two-to-three-story buildings on Cleveland Avenue. The 2005 Concept Plan did say buildings up to four stories in downtown, however, limiting on Cleveland to one and a half to two stories. So, yeah, the official community plan highlights the need to accommodate mixed-use developments and a commercial core on Cleveland. The current OCP does encourage commercial use downtown, but did not anticipate six-story residential density on Cleveland. With limited parking, restricting building heights on Cleveland to two stories does ensure space for these commercial parking uses, and the two stories maintains the mountain views. This is an excerpt from the 2017 OCP Discussion Draft. And in the draft, we've established new view corridor criteria as a development approval information area. But those, but specific parameters related to view and shade studies being required would need to be detailed in an associated procedures bylaw. But essentially, that is in the Discussion Draft to assess view and shade impact of proposed development downtown. So, moving from policy to regulations, much of Cleveland is zoned C4, which has a maximum six-story building height. Prior to 2016, we did not see any six-story applications on Cleveland. We have a couple of four-story buildings. Further, in 2009, the B.C. Building Code now allows six-story wood frame construction. We have seen heightened development interest. In 2016, the first six-story building application was approved called the Main at South Cleveland. And since then, we have had a number of six-story applications downtown. So, the three objectives for Cleveland Avenue could be characterized as follows. Number one, to create a vibrant urban environment, drawing people to downtown as the heart of Squamish. Number two, to encourage economic investment on Cleveland through downtown revitalization and redevelopment. And three, to protect the incredible views that we have from downtown to the mountains. And that includes largely the Chief and Garibaldi. So, looking at some local precedents for view corridors and shade, first, we'll look at Vancouver. So, Vancouver is an example of having highly prescriptive view protection guidelines that frame very specific views from certain locations. So, this is a map from Vancouver where they've, yeah, mapped out 27 view cones. And so, if a site is located within a view cone, the maximum building height could be less than the maximum height permitted by the zoning. And the process is that staff reviews each application and calculates the maximum building height based on that view preservation. And then, the second piece, the higher building.
Can you just go back and explain that a little bit more? The viewpoint is at the point of the cone?
The viewpoint would be where those letters and numbers are.
So, they're all on the one side of Falls Creek there?
Exactly, yes.
So, they're on water? Just trying to understand it in context of what we're looking at.
Yeah, that is a good point. I know in Vancouver, the idea is to protect views of the North Shore Mountains primarily, so that does seem a bit odd that they're all taken from the water.
It seems purposely to make sure those waterfront properties have views.
Thank you. Excuse my voice today. Those viewpoints are all from the waterfront trail there, and they've kept their density. They've preserved parkland on the waterfront, and they've preserved their viewpoints from the waterfront. And then, they have immediate density, eight, 10 stories, and now they're going up 15, 20 stories. So, you want to review, you have a beautiful walkway along the waterfront that's preserved park space and walkway. You want to go shopping and preserve your commercial industry intensity, you walk in and walk. Seems like a really good idea.
I just wanted to make a point that the viewpoints are from the water's edge.
If I could contribute something briefly, the grade there also allows for those views to be enjoyed from Broadway as well, so even though the viewpoint is from the water, you know, I've always said the mayor wants a good view, so you have to consider that when you're proposing density. So, I've always taken it to mean that up on 12, where City Hall is, is where the point is being from.
Our city hall is in Donna.
Yeah.
But growing up in Vancouver and seeing this debate in the media from time to time, the other thing is that you're in the middle of the downtown area, the question is, what do you see? You're not just, the people along those numbers along the waterfront aren't the only people who require a view. And it's always been a stated objective that I get from the media, to preserve the street ends and keep the street ends open, so somebody on the street would be able to see the North Shore Mountains. Primarily, it's the North Shore Mountains, but also, when you look up the other way to the rest, it's also English Building, West End, and so forth. So, that's the other aspect of, because, of course, not everybody in the city of Vancouver is sitting on Falls Creek. There's word you see things from other parts.
Okay. And then, the next image from Vancouver is higher building heights. And so, this is interesting in that they've designated certain areas where they want to see higher buildings. And this is primarily to mark the prominence of the Central Business District, so it stands out. And interestingly, also, two prominent bridge gateways to mark the entry into downtown from Burrard and Granville Heights. So, then, another precedent is UBC. And they've done a very similar idea to what Vancouver, just what I just showed of Vancouver. And further, councillor raised this comment, UBC is well set up. The Main, the Main Mall and University Boulevard are both situated on topographical ridges, or ridge, so they benefit from views in both directions down those main streets. So, at UBC, similar to Vancouver, they're preserving views to the mountains primarily and the water. And so, what UBC does is they've got, in that image you see there, the orange, that's called a type-one view, so a footprint of a new building must not intrude into those view corridors at all. The type-two, those buildings are limited in height, the pink areas. And so, also, UBC policy says that new buildings and significant renovation projects shall include upper-level public lounges that provide access to views above the tree line. And so, also, going back to that idea of Vancouver where they've got certain zones where they want taller buildings than others, this diagram here from UBC shows that in the center, they actually want lower buildings in that light orange color, and then the darker orange, they're showing more moderate and taller buildings in that area. So, the last precedent is more local, Whistler Village, who have very detailed view and shading requirements from new developments. And essentially, in terms of shading, they really want to preserve what they call their hot zones. And so, those are public plazas, walkways, as well as neighboring patios and pools. And so, from Whistler, they've got a booklet of protected, very specific views that are both from the village out as well as the approach to the village. And so, they've documented in the range of 50 different views. And then, this image here goes back to the shading, so they call these areas outdoor rooms. And they've documented each of their outdoor rooms with detailed characteristics, including use patterns, seating, design, and additional solar access considerations, so that they have a lot to work with when a development comes forward and has done a shade study. This map shows the important outdoor patios and pools map, so they've really looked at it in a lot of detail. And then, just the last slide on precedence, another interesting factor with the potential height determinants is, you know, the orientation of your main street. So, within Squamish, we're actually pretty well situated in that Cleveland runs nearly north-south, and it almost lines up perfectly with Mount Garibaldi. Whereas if it was lined up east-west, that would be a different consideration with shade. You know, if you had a high building on the south side of an east-west facing street, then that whole commercial street would be in the shade. And then, another factor in certain communities would be historic preservation. So, wanting to, you know, there's lots of mountain towns that have done studies wanting to preserve that historic core, and so those tend to be lower buildings. So, this brings us to our case study, which is 38108 Cleveland. It's the vacant lot at the corner of Winnipeg and Cleveland on the east side. And as mentioned, Sabrina Golly's here, and she's got her development team with her as well. And she's also brought a pro forma that we can look at after this presentation to look at the important economic side. So, this property is zoned C2 currently. And, yeah, the rezoning application is to allow for six stories. And thanks to Sabrina, she's provided some really good view and shade studies to help with this presentation. So, right, so this is the existing site.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Commercial and shade studies, I'm just wondering why the six stories on that much in last week didn't shade study?
That, like the.
That seems extremely relevant.
Soraco?
Yes, Soraco.
Yes, that was, we were not able to include that, but I've separately got Soraco shade studies in this presentation.
Thank you.
So, this is showing sort of the existing downtown with primarily low-story buildings. This is a similar perspective showing if it were to be built out at four stories, a very sort of generic look at that. And then, also, at the six stories.
Can you flip back?
Yep.
And do in the back of the next one? And that's done at a certain time, you're at a certain time of day? I'm just trying to understand the shading. Are they the same?
Sabrina, maybe you can answer that question, or your architect. I don't know if the shade in this image was taken at a particular.
I don't know where this was taken.
I think there's other slides that will look at different times of day.
So, this is a view across the site from the other side of Cleveland, looking at the Chief as it currently stands, and we have the Mistral Building there. This is an image showing if it were to be built out to four stories, and an image if it were to be built out to six. And so, going through these, we have sort of three views of the Chief and three views of Garibaldi, looking at the four-story and the six-story iteration. So, again, looking towards the Chief from a bit farther back on Winnipeg, the existing site, that shows the four-story build-out, and that's the six-story. And so, further to that, we've included this image here that was in the Soraco Development Application Package, showing the Soraco, which is essentially six stories, and what it will look like there. This view is basically looking to Garibaldi, so north on Cleveland from the other side of the street, with the view showing the four-story build-out. And then, this one shows the six stories. So, what's interesting with this is that the town planners back in the day, I'm sure that they lined up Cleveland because of the Mamquand Blind Channel, but it's nice that you can still see Garibaldi down Cleveland. So, now, we're looking from the same side of the street as the application site. This is the existing situation, the existing view. That would be the view with the four-story build-out, and there we have the six stories. And this is the last view of Garibaldi, looking more from, not quite the middle of the road, but standing on the road, looking.
Jane Walker.
Yeah. Crossing the sidewalk, or crossing the crosswalk. So, there is Garibaldi in the current situation with the four-story build-out, and then with the six-story. So, that is it for the view studies, and now, this is the shading. So, first, we'll go through the four times-of-year shading on a four-story version. And the applicant did include the surrounding buildings if they were to be built out at that same height. So, here we have four stories on the summer solstice. The, both the spring and fall equinox provide the same shade, so this is the spring and fall equinox at the four-story height. And here, we have the four-story height on the winter solstice. So, similarly, we've got the six-story, middle of the summer, well, summer solstice, the spring and fall equinox for the six-story, and then, the six-story on the winter solstice. So, as mentioned, we did also include the Soraco shade studies that were included in their development application. So, they did a study for the spring and fall equinox. This is early in the morning, 8 o'clock in the morning, at noon, and at 4:00 p.m. And again, there's a six-story. And then, what they found actually was in the winter, that the shade from the Chief in the morning shades downtown. So, at 9:00 in the morning, it's all in shade from the Chief. In the winter, solstice at noon, that's the shade. And at 3:00 p.m., that's the shade there. So, as mentioned, staff envisions bringing forward case study number two, which is the Park West site. Staff will engage with the public and landowners on Cleveland following that. And then, after that, staff will bring forward the results of engagement with potential proposed bylaw amendments forward to council. And just to alert council, staff did alert the BIA of today's event, but did not broadcast it publicly. Not today's event, this discussion that we're having. So, potential bylaw amendments could be, that height could be regulated per building, so amending the C4 zone as a whole to a lower height, but allowing discretionary height increases based on view and shade impact studies, so essentially, a density bonus. That the height could be regulated by zone, so going back to Vancouver's idea of having like gateway, higher buildings where the, where people are entering into downtown, maybe there's higher buildings at the entry to Cleveland to garner interest and have people move down Cleveland, with different regulations for the core of Cleveland and the south. Or, height could also potentially be regulated within a building's location in a block, so on the mid-block versus on the corner. So, those are some ideas. This is a map of downtown in Cleveland, if we want to talk about that. And this was a fun image from 2014, when we celebrated Squamish's 100 years, showing the transition from the last 100 years to today. Where are we headed next? Thank you.
Probably buildings back then.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything in the policy or regulation about flaring the street ends? I recall somewhere in the past, the discussion about buildings that were on one of those sides, around the cross streets, particularly Winnipeg or Victoria or so forth, would be flared, so they might be relatively close to the street level, but then would step back. Is there anything in policy or any of the plans about that?
Mayor, through you. I actually don't know off the top of my head, but I also recall maybe seeing higher building heights on corners in some policy.
If I may, I think we do have DPA guidelines that speak to stepping back on the upper floors, and they emphasize the street ends as the place to do that. Our current guidelines don't specify which story should be set back. So, some applicants have interpreted as being, you know, the uppermost story being set back rather than the upper four stories.
I have deeper concerns with shading for our community. I worry about employment land. I also think about C4 zoning and think it's, that zoning in particular is not a good zoning. We don't have lots, first of all, we haven't addressed parking issues with our second floor commercial.
So, the conversation today is about height?
I know. It's about height.
You want to finish?
Thank you. With height restrictions, if you have just density for, that allows residential up above and commercial on two floors, you don't address parking issues. If you separate commercial and residential, it might be a better idea. With height restrictions, you only address one issue, which is shade. You don't address employment issues, you don't address housing issues, you don't address anything else except for a view corridor, and that's, we're talking about our main street for employment. In Vancouver, we're comparing ourselves to view corridors in Falls Creek instead of view corridors in employment areas. This is an employment area. We want our businesses to be downtown. We've already zoned and had first reading for downtown across the way, which is also downtown, as townhouses with very limited points on height. And the height on Second Avenue is already modeled as a six-story buildings with just residential and very limited commercial. So, we're allowing Second Avenue to densify to six stories, we're allowing the Mamquand Blind Channel to densify to six stories, and then, we're talking about our only employment area and limiting its height. I don't understand. And I agree with that, a few corridors are where you look up the street, a few corridors are where you walk a block and walk along what we are setting as our beautiful walkway along the oceanfront that has pristine views everywhere. Do we want views from every single place in Squamish to be maintained, or do we want some employment and some housing?
Karen and Jason and Ted.
So, thank you, Sabrina, for being case studying on this. This is really interesting. My question, sort of in terms of the options of, one of the things we've talked about on council is how, what are the options so that we don't end up with the same building height all along Cleveland that we end up with? And I think this is why the Lego maybe has come in. So, that maybe some buildings are four, and we already have one that's six in the Main, but others may be kept to two, and so that we have sort of an undulating, interesting downtown rather than just a wall of buildings that are all the same height. So, I think it was in Gastown where people weren't able to, so a certain height was allowed, but people weren't able to sell their height but keep their building lower, so they could still make money off of the density they don't build by selling to someone else, so they could put an extra floor in there. So, have we looked at the possibility of doing that in as well?
That's definitely an option. And here we are today, just to explore with council, are we open to looking into these options on Cleveland?
I think for me, I want our policy to be able to create a very different, interesting downtown rather than all one height. And I think, you know, employment is important, but also, we don't want to create a street where all the patios get shaded, because it's about how people interact with the environment. We want people to sit outside on a sunny day on Cleveland Avenue, and how we keep that street animated regardless of the time of year. I think our challenge in Squamish is that it's always rainy and dark in winter. And so, my other question was, can we use, can we use the materials we request from people to create a sense of light as we build up on Squamish? Like, can that be part of?
Absolutely, could be in the DPA to balance.
So, maybe, before I go on, I'll just, I'll just explain my little Lego thing here. So, this is a one-story building. This is a two-story building with the exact same FSR. This is a three-story building with the exact same FSR. Four-story, five-story, six-story, eight-story. Same FSR just helps people understand that you actually, can actually attain views by going higher and get more public space by going higher. So, I don't want the height, and I think this has always been a challenge with how we've articulated this, we've always created a box for developers to build into. We have our setbacks, and we have our height. And developer will say, I've got to maximize my investment, I'm going to build in my box, with little variations, little variances all over the place, but build in my box. And so, I think what council's been grappling with is, how do we get to a formula whereby we're not just making boxes? You know, people building up through the boxes, that we're creating architecturally interesting buildings that were being cognizant of shading and view corridors and, and public space and that type of thing. So, I did this little experiment here, and don't judge my architectural abilities or anything like this, but this side, and I originally had this actually built up to six stories, this is more like a four-story building. And then, I asked, I asked someone, well, like, what would you do differently? And they said, well, and this, they weren't being architects at this point, they were basically just saying, well, this is your five-story building, exact same FSR, do something like that, and all of a sudden, you create the same amount of floor space, you get, sell the same amount of condos, the same amount of employment space, but you're actually maybe creating architect, you know, view corridors, you're creating opportunities for cafes and coffee shops to have patios on the street, because you're actually not completely shading up the street. And I think what, I want to sort of get to the intention here, and then we can get to some of the, some of the, 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 the regulations. some of the regulations or the tools that we may use to build architectural interest, build lightness, build, build, build public space, build view corridors, while still making it developer-friendly in terms of getting to the point where we have an interesting downtown that's going to last the test of time. I think some of the problem now is if we build out to the current rules, we are going to get a very uninspiring town that won't be able to compete with waterfront landing in downtown and other places because it's going to be a shade zone and because it's going to be architecturally uninspiring. And the public space is not going to be well, well thought out in terms of wind and rain and shade and all those things. So I think that's where I want to get to. And I mean, this is just me having fun, but you get the height, but you get some architectural interest, you get some view corridors. You know, I noticed that one picture of looking down Cleveland. And if the building was stepped back and you got your height more on Long Beach Lane, your view, you actually saw it not care about the all of a sudden. So I want to figure out if we can come up with a formula. And we always do height and maybe it's an FSR or an average building height and be able to do this sort of trade-off if I want to, if I can only really build four efficiently because I can't even come close to meeting parking requirements on my smaller lot, I can sell some of that density to allow a larger lot to build up higher. So I think, I think where I'd like council to go is what's our intention? I think our intention is to make a very vibrant, interesting downtown. And then, and not to make it a bunch of like sausages, I like to call them, building, building, building. And so how do we get there? So I'd love to see the conversation go into that more sort of ideas, solution. How do we get to the intention? I've got a whole bunch of speakers. Doug.
Who wasn't me?
Jason, Ted, Susan, Peter.
No. I didn't know my end.
I'm sorry.
So in my view, I think we need to treat this discussion as a very separate discussion from the rest of downtown. So I'll confine my comments to the area of Cleveland between Pemberton and Victoria Street. Because that's, that's the commercial core, that's the high street. And so I think anything that we do, we have to keep in mind that if we want this to remain a high street, we have to make good decisions about it because if we make the wrong decisions, it will no longer be a high street. And, you know, the status quo actually works quite well. We have to remember that, you know, there are lots of successful businesses. There's varied types of businesses. There are definitely some empty lots, but, you know, by and large, we have an intact high street. And so if you think about all of the high streets in other communities, what you find is in most cases, they don't allow big heights on their high streets. Even six stories is high. Think about Robson Street, think about Denman Street, think about Davie Street. You know, there's lots of other case examples where very successful shopping areas where people want to congregate and spend time outside, the heights are very small. And we also have to understand that if we make lots of changes around, you know, this density bonusing idea, what is the impact going to be on all the existing blocks, businesses? Are those going to get knocked down and then, you know, redeveloped into something else? And what does that mean? Because to me, the most unique selling feature of our high street is that it's quirky, it's got lots of different businesses that really you would never be able to locate in any other kind of commercial context. So in my view, I mean, I, I understand the impetus to get a handle on this. And from my point of view, the view corridors that need to be prioritized are from sort of key public spaces. And I'm not sure yet if we've really defined what those are. You know, there's some obvious ones in terms of our public parks. However, particularly at the intersection of Winnipeg and Cleveland, you know, with the exception of the, the clock tower, Riverly Clock, we, we, it's all private property. And maybe we need to think about what does that future look like? So that's sort of my view on that. I think for all the other parts of downtown, very, very important that we have, you know, we allow height and we allow that to happen and we have it in a more rigorous manner. And this kind of thing, you know, on any other street other than Cleveland actually, you know, or even other blocks of Cleveland, I think it would be desirable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, yeah, thanks for the bringing this forward. I like the idea of the corners being stepped. And, you know, like Patty's example there. That's what I'd like to see downtown. And I know as soon as you start reducing people's footprint, you're reducing their parking. We're not talking about, take a six-story building and punch it into an eight-story building. That's still, that whole platform has to be parking in order for that density. Density is a big thing. But the stepping of the corners and courtyards. Jason just brought up the, the clock tower corner or four corners where the clock tower is. Me, that's the most important corner we have right now and that's why I'm glad we're having this discussion because obviously there's going to be some changes in that corner. It's already coming, but there's two big huge lots with two little stores on them. And if the pressure keeps going in the growth, somebody's going to come in with a development on those corners. And if we're going to get courtyards, that's definitely a place we've got to look at that. Also now the gateway, we talked about Pemberton Avenue, but there is a couple of lots north of Pemberton Avenue we should also factor in because we don't want to miss them. And gas station lot and the other one. Yeah, and, and so we have, I, I think that should be part of the conversation. They will be redeveloped also. And looking for a potential, where, where do the high rises go when we do have 12 stories coming in? I think it'd be good to get our head around that because it might be nice to know that and we might get one or two if we want them. But I know a couple of locations in the downtown where I think 12 stories would be fine. And then, let's see, parking goes with the density. And then to Karen's point about the building sightings and, you know, to lighten, that's a good idea too, is to pick building materials that'll brighten up areas because no matter what we do, we still have a dark corridor in the downtown. And it makes me think of the one there, the guys lived in the valley. And they took mirrors up on the top of the hill. Did anyone read about that place? Did you read that? They put these big mirrors up on the hill that were hooked up to solar and they directed the sun down into this little town. And as the day went by, the little town had all this sun coming in. I mean, that was incredible. So. Parking and density and, yeah, and a lot of the buildings are going to be knocked down. So, but particularly the corners are what I'd be concerned about.
Well, hopefully we can avoid the mirror situation. But I appreciate Patty's illustration here. I think it gave me food for thought. And I agree with some of the other comments made by council there, especially Jason's comments about some of the historical buildings downtown not wanting to lose some of that quirkiness and have them just blown over and redeveloped into larger lots. The second to the last slide that you had up there had a couple of options on it, three options, I believe. Can we go back and just have a little conversation about some of those pieces maybe? Just throw some of that around a bit? Any thoughts?
Is this one?
Yeah. Does council have any thoughts on some of these options that you have up there?
Why don't we keep that in mind?
Okay. I think it's worth discussing.
Yeah.
Thanks. As a business owner on Cleveland Avenue, most of us think that the only thing to resolve in Cleveland Avenue is a D9. And it's been a joke that's been going around our businesses forever.
We don't have.
A D9 is a, it's a.
Loser.
Yeah. Those buildings are undercoated. Most of them are wired with non-tube aluminum wiring. They are not historical buildings. They are clapped and bored and were put up in a very specific period after fire. So they're not historical buildings. They need upgrading, they need rezoning, they need vibrancy. And it's really hard to run a business in a place that has inadequate wiring, not energy efficient, it's expensive to run a business on Cleveland Avenue because of those reasons. And it's not like Vancouver where you have all the beautiful historic buildings or traditional downtowns where they were built from brick and they were solid and you could preserve the facade they built behind. It's, they're buildings that were inadequately built for a modern business. And most of them are too small to have these proper businesses. So yes, there's some really great quirky businesses in there and we need to have some sort of bylaws to protect those businesses from moving into places where you build housing above. Because right now, we're just going to get housing above and commercial down below. And those businesses will not be able to afford to go into a residential building. They call it the shoppers drug mart effect in Vancouver, where you build a residential building and you try and put businesses in it because of the expense and the, and the taxation that comes with being in a residential building. Businesses can't afford to go into those buildings. Commercial drive is a perfect example of that. They've maintained their commercial zoning. They put commercial, specific commercial zoning so there can't be C4 zoning with residential above and commercial down below. They preserved their employment space and made sure that it's five floors, which I would mind for Cleveland Avenue, five floors of zoning. Make it, and use architecture to make it interesting. I completely agree with the mayor. Training density, I don't mind that. Upzoning, have further height. As mayor suggested and moving to the city, if you want towers in different places. But it's amazing when you look at Europe and the places that are six stories and flat and the used architecture and color to make it interesting. And they're vibrant high streets. You don't have to have ground floor patio space. I imagine if all the buildings are connected and if they were all the same height, you could have a walkway all the way across the top and put all your patios up top and have amazing views from the top of the buildings. And actually build patio space, restaurant space up above and have it be stepped down. There's many ways of architecture to resolve all those issues. And we want to ensure that the community has employment space to grow into and not just housing and density without employment space.
Thank you, Sabrina and Doug.
So I'm sure you've noticed me as a fly in the wall, just sitting back and listening to all these comments. And I think all of these comments have a lot of value. The objective in us coming here today was to say, here's a site that we have to rezone. So it's kind of this unique opportunity downtown. We don't know what to do with it necessarily. You have your objectives as well. Let's make it work together. So we are coming as an open book. We have no preconceptions of what this should look like. We've sent a preliminary application just to get the conversation going. We have a pro forma that we will openly share with you so that all of these pieces can be incorporated into what a typical infill site downtown will look like. And yes, there could be variety from that, but let's use this as a baseline so that everyone in this room understands the noise, everyone understands the parking challenges, everyone understands the shading and view impacts. But let's not use these pieces in isolation anymore. Let's, let's just start whiteboarding. So the intent today for us, and maybe today isn't the right venue for that, but we did bring our architect. So if someone says, well, what if we reduce the dry aisle to X? Or we have a number of small car parking stalls? Or if we did do the setback, how is that going to impact the pro forma? So we were willing to do a live pro forma today where we adjust the square footage, we adjust the unit count, the parking count. We have our VP of Construction here as well, so he can speak the construction numbers. We have a local Realtor who can speak the office leasing numbers and sales numbers. So how do we get all these pieces together to make it work? Again, we're not coming with any preconceived notions as to what it can look like, but a genuine collaborative approach to do the right thing on what I consider a pretty significant corner downtown. So again, maybe today isn't the right venue for that, but we're open to running through that process with you. We have no urgency on this corner whatsoever. We want to do the right thing. So how do we do that as a group and get it right for the rest of downtown as well?
And I appreciate those comments. And I think, what I think council's trying to get around is articulating the intent, articulating some of the tools so that we can get to the conversation that we could have using your project as sort of the limitless.
I guess the problem is by defining the tools, we're already creating boundaries around what you need to work.
I don't think that's the intention. I think the tools are more like, how do we, we, we have to create some perspective or some ability to articulate how do we get to where you will get on your property? So we just, you know, in terms of density swapping, that may allow a portion of your property to go to eight stories. Your example, right?
But speaking to that point, that creates parking problems. So if we now build that.
Well, absolutely. There's a ripple effect of every, of every decision. Some properties are too small to be able to encompass parking.
For sure. And that's why when you have the experts here, why not bring those to light and say, will this have any impact, architect, will this have any impact on the efficiencies and the core? Because we need two cores now if we're going to go commercial or residential. So it has direct physical implications when, I mean, when these parameters are being set.
Yeah. And I think perhaps we all came to this workshop with a bit, bit of a different expectation.
But anyway, we're open to that conversation. That's all I'm saying.
At all.
I think we're similar and we're up in the air right now and we're about to come down to the ground and see how it actually works. But I think we need to stay up here for a little bit longer to answer those questions like, do we want to keep Cleveland as this commercial hub? Which means there's very little residential because it beats up all the parking? Or do we want to spread out the commercial hub throughout downtown? And that allows for, for residential on Cleveland? Because I think one of the intentions for Cleveland to be two stories is not just the views. It's the actual space that you require. And if you look at buildings, even the small buildings, you know, they're on small lots, but they take up most of the lot. And it's all commercial. If you start adding residential on top, that, you have to park it somewhere.
Yeah. Thank you. Doug?
Thanks. So it is for me a little hard to look at these things in isolation and find, for example, this discussion just to height. Because I think when you're talking about that, you're talking about, it's not just view corridors. That's one of the aspects of this. But there's also the shading, there's density, we want density in certain places and so forth. And I'm reminded of my first term in council, in fact, it was one of the first decisions we made after we were elected. We booted an application where the characo now is going to be, which in effect would have been about a five-story wall. And we didn't want that. And we invited the proponent to come back with something that sort of opened the site up a little bit, perhaps went a little bit higher in some places where you could more or less have a sense of what was on the other side. Unfortunately, the proponent didn't. So it was a different developer that ultimately got the zoning. So for me, it's about keeping some sense of view corridors. I mean, the problem with vacant lots is you get used to the view through vacant lot and we know that's not always the future and it's a bit of a change then when somebody comes along and even puts a one-story building there. So I think this site's been vacant for a long time. Almost whatever you put there is going to get some reaction. But looking at that street generally, for me, it's going to be view corridors largely through the street ends and preserving the street corridors. One of the slides up there shows six-story buildings and so forth. And then the one-story building where the real estate offices, it used to be the drugstore. The person standing next to that building won't see the chief either because they're right next to the building. And that's the reality of where you stand. And if you get far enough away, you could have an eight-story building and you could still see half the chief. So I think you have to kind of just keep a sense of openness. Inevitably, if you get development, you're going to close off some of the views. And you're going to create some shading sometimes of the day and sometimes of the year. Downtown area, it's already situated between two high mountain areas and gets limited sunshine during the winter months anyway. Summer is not such a problem because the sun's higher in the sky. So I'd be looking for view corridors specifically down the street. I don't think we as, as council or staff even have sort of decided, if we look at some of the precedents, some people in Whistler, they had it mapped out, you know, what are the public areas that they want to protect for sun and view and so forth. And I'm not sure we've actually come to that point and really know what it is we want to protect. We have a park downtown which is sort of, you know, actually pretty safe in the sense that it's parked all the way to the water. Nothing's going to get in front of it on that side. You still might get some height on, on the north or south boundary of it or even the west boundary. But it's largely because of its location and size. It's largely kind of bulletproof. And so there's one public area. But other areas, we talked about this intersection where the Riverly Clock is Winnipeg and Cleveland and where this proposal is. And that's all private property. Somebody made the point. And so how would you get a public space there? So when I say it's hard to look at this in isolation, because if you're thinking about all this, you might say, well, that is a good place for public space. Why don't we just close off Winnipeg Street, turn it into a park? For that block or maybe the block. For that block and maybe the block between Cleveland and Loggers Lane. Kind of have to take the blinders off a little bit and think about, you know, do we really need those two short stretches of street? We can access everything from Cleveland or Second Avenue or Loggers Lane. But they would make nice malls. They're on a street end. We're going to protect the street end. There's nothing in front of that in the water. You get views up the sides if you step back the building. The other thing is the setbacks that I think is important, the flaring. And I'm not going to get specific about it, whether it should be one or more, but I think everybody understands the angles. And if you add some setbacks, as Mayor pointed out in that one shot of Mount Garibaldi, if you just set the building back a little bit, it doesn't matter whether it's eight or 10 or 12 stories, it wouldn't have blocked Garibaldi from the sidewalk. So I think those types of things are also very important. Personally, I'm open to height and shrinking the footprint to create on a given site some areas that aren't just the same size footprint going up. When I take the point about the parking, you know, an eight story building will typically require more parking and where you put the parking. But it doesn't mean you can't have, you know, a full size footprint for one or two stories and then reveal height above that. I think one of the other questions though that comes out of this kind of discussion is because inevitably, if we're talking about height in Cleveland Avenue, we're talking about significant residential. And because there isn't, it's not downtown Vancouver, not a world commercial center. If you start going out, you're going to end up with residential. We don't have the economy that can fill up with commercial space. Not for probably our lifetimes at least. So is that the place we want to put density residential? On that particular street, on the high street, as Council Blackman would prefer to? I don't know the answer to that, but I think that's something we kind of have to get our heads around. Or whether you start putting all the people, like we brought density in Loggers Lane, you've got density coming in Second Avenue and some of the other places. Do we want density necessarily on that shopping block, that commercial block? Or is it going to be more, not entirely commercial or less residential than having potentially four or five stories of residential of all of these floors all the way down the street?
Matt, do you want to say something? Come up to the podium.
Hi, Matt Black. I'm from Toronto. I'd love to share this conversation and discussion. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned at all is green, the whole idea that we're, in 10 years from now, we've been, let me see, we just came up with a forecast that said we're all going to be driving a bunch of cars. In fact, not going to be driving our own bunch of cars, we're going to be driving car sharing, which is going to completely change the parking situation.
Automated car sharing, electric vehicles.
Automated, I mean, that's coming way quicker. So in Europe, they've adopted a green roof concept. So you either have plants or solar or some sort of thermal life. It just occurred, no discussion, just I'm just wondering, the green roof concept and how, how we're going to incorporate that into our OCP, especially for the downtown area where shading is going to be critical. And I love the idea of view corridors and hotspots. And let's extend that to allow, to look at it from an energy perspective and also a climate perspective. So that's something that I'd love to see more discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and the green roof concept, that's a bit of a separate conversation. This is, this is literally about heights on Cleveland and trying to understand the consequences of various policies and ideas about how to deal with Cleveland in height specifically. Green roof concept, another conversation, very relevant.
It's important because you need to know where the sun is and how much of it you're going to get during the day.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, just Doug's point a little bit there. I think it's also a good idea to know where we want the public space. You know, I mean, that's something we can kind of pick. It's back to the clock tower, you know, that corner, maybe the corner of Main Street. But have a clear idea like council or staff where those spots are. And and Chiracol among the waterfront is six stories pretty much all the way. There's a little couple of gaps in between there, but it just, I think you're a little bit unfair with your comments there. While we have you guys here, you know, the pro forma. I mean, it's not very often council has an opportunity to have someone that can speak on pro formas. And I think it might be interesting if we get to find out from a numbers person why we're getting these big square buildings with as many apartments in them as we can. And I don't know if council's into that because I didn't see kind of a collaborative thing on the agenda. But I do think it would be interesting for us to understand a bit about the pro forma because when you see, how many parking stalls can I fit on the property? That's how many apartments I can fit. How much does it cost to build? I'm going to make this. That's why they're square. I mean, I would like to hear a comment from the pro forma person on your staff since it's here.
Well, we have it. We can throw it out.
Okay, let's, let's let Ted finish up. I have other speakers and then we'll...
Yeah, well, that was it. And then the green roofs, I mean, we should be doing green roofs everywhere. We should be doing green roofs. I mean, I, I don't know why that's not part of our bylaw. And I do like the idea, and I think Mayor, it was your idea, to get some restaurants up on roofs. But for sure, green roofs.
My idea was a bar, though.
Bar, restaurant.
Okay. Thank you. Jason and Susan? You were not, too?
I really think that our zoning is what is lacking in Cleveland Avenue. And I don't remember how everything became C4, but we need to separate it out. As Ted said, if people need to build housing, there should be lots for housing and lots for commercial. And those should be separated out so that you can afford to build commercial and that people who are interested in building commercial can do what the cornerstone building did, is gather a group of individuals that need building space and get together and build a building. And that the zoning, we need a new zoning because the only thing we have right now is highway commercial in our downtown. I don't know how that happened. And we zoned at C4 anyways. So we did have some commercial that was highway commercial and then it all got made into C4. So that is an enormous miss. Because it may, it only encourages developers to come in and build what is profitable, which is housing and some...
Is there any more C9? I mean, I know the main was C9 before, wait, before it was the main.
Or maybe it's C4.
Before it was the main, when it was a different proposal, it was...
It was highway commercial.
It was C9, which is highway commercial, and now it's C4. But are there, is there any more C9 in the downtown?
I don't think so. I think this may be one of the few sites that has different zoning.
And I think the C9 was the zoning that had hotel specific stuff in it. And that might be explanation of why the C9 wasn't on highway but downtown. And so our zoning definitions aren't perfect for sure, but...
Maybe we need to change, actually set lots aside for commercial in our commercial area. And if we want commercial throughout the downtown, say, these are designated in the OCP as commercial and then residential can be built as residential with adequate parking. With commercial, it just takes up residential parking and makes it viable, as Ted said.
And yeah, you're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place on that. Because, you know, on the one hand, smart open ground and sort of philosophy about how to create a vibrant commercial area involves a certain amount of residential.
Absolutely.
And eyes on the street and all that sort of thing.
Not saying just commercial or just, I'm saying that we do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. So, so I think we need to figure, come up with a way. And it's viable to have buildings like the cornerstones where you have all businesses go in. And, and maybe we create, and this is where I think we need to sort of develop our policy, is how do we create scenarios whereby we're maybe incentivizing somehow the commercial buildings, everything commercial, four stories, commercial. And we create that through variances on a variety of different things. Maybe it's parking, maybe it's something else. I don't know.
Maybe it's taxes.
Maybe it's taxes. Maybe it's, yeah. So I mean, we can create those and I think that's the conversation we want to have. Because I think we, we need a mix on Cleveland. You want to have some eyes on the street. You want to, you don't want to diminish the employment ability, but you want a vibrant downtown area where people are there, working every day, eating at the shops, buying things, congregating on weekends, at night on the rooftop bar. Did I say that enough? Do we want to dig into the pro forma so we understand that a bit better? And then maybe we can use that as a context to stimulate.
Yeah, I think what we're, what we've heard so far...
And just progress of time, we, we only have a half hour more scheduled for this. I might be able to shave tiny bits off the other agenda items, but not too much. But just to make sure.
So just to recap, what I think we heard is that Cleveland is a different street. It is a high street and it should probably retain that character with potential to mix things up, make it interesting and maybe add residential. Not everywhere, incentivize commercial. But it, it requires a different treatment than the rest of downtown. Would that, would that be correct?
I think that's what I'm hearing generally from everybody, yes. Yeah, Mayor?
I think the only thing that I heard in addition to that is designating and protecting what we believe are the view corridors and public spaces and where we'd like that zoning.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, road ends are obvious, but maybe do we want to figure out where public, public congregating and give attention to those areas? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, Doug?
And the other is, and I think you mentioned it, is the idea of to get in a regular skyline or something with...
Something interesting.
Is, is to be able to swap density. And the classic example of that is, is the church that's at the northeast corner of Gerard in Georgia. A friend of mine acted for them actually and negotiated the sale of their airspace
Of course you knew so much.
To the developer next door. And so nobody is going to build a high rise on a church site because it's, it belongs to some site next door. So that kind of stuff is relatively easy to do if you have a will to do it. And if you have some idea of what equals what in going from one to the other and what your maximums are, I guess at some point it might be a limit. Like in a town like this, Vancouver, it's, it's pretty high, but we're not here. So, but, but that type of flexibility, I think, is the ability to do that kind of deal. It's important, especially with, when you look at that block, there's a whole bunch of stuff there that is just really underutilized. And maybe it doesn't all have to be high rise. I mean, why developers do this to make a profit, they're not a charity becoming a profit. We all know that. And they're not going to do it for the ones. So give them the ability to do that and then still get our, our goals.
I've got Ted now to go to.
Just to the concept of selling airspace, I mean, I've heard that 10 years ago about airspace and it's a really great concept. If we played our cards right on that, the district could be the benefactor of selling airspace. So some of the lots that are designated low that might want to go high, we might want to look at that for whatever we can get for that airspace.
We call it density most, I guess.
Well, it's an interesting concept.
Jonas?
Okay, I think at this point, we're going to turn it over to the applicants.
So the pro forma now stands, does not work based on current land values. And we want to come in on their current land values so we understand the challenges that any developer is going to see if they come to town. This is microscopic. I don't know if we can make it bigger. Can anyone see that?
Can you see the zoom?
Yeah. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to walk you through this. So our site size here, the leasable, saleable area and the reason, this is, this is the efficiency number. So this is how much saleable we actually get from the amount we can build. Now in Squamish, that is much lower than other municipalities because of our inability to go underground for parking. And it, it's not an inability, it's a cost prohibitiveness to go underground, which we can speak to further. You can ask questions of our VP of Construction if you want to know what that differential is for above grade parking versus below grade parking in Squamish. So our proposal that we submitted had ground floor, commercial, so retail space that was fronting both Loggers, Winnipeg and Cleveland. It's a unique corner because we want to activate all four streets or three streets. So it's a little bit challenging. Lease rates are about $17 right now and that's on the higher end for retail space. What we heard and what we hear frequently from the BIA is that that's way too high for current members to pay. That's what we're being told. They want more space, but they don't want it at 17 bucks. They want it at 12. That's what we're hearing. And we have a realtor here. So we have experts in the room. So if you want, pose questions to any of the experts in the room, aside from myself. I just take the information from experts and populate the spreadsheet. Office floor, office space is $12 and those are based on recent comps. So those are lease rates. Residential floor space, and this is assuming smaller units. So the problem with smaller units is that it requires more parking. But we also hear that the bachelors and the one bedrooms are really where people want to buy right now so that they can live and work in Squamish. There's a lot of service jobs that need filling. Those are the kind of apartments that are selling. So if you see on the ground floor, we have retail. We have one level of parking. On level three, we have office. Four, five and six, we have residential. That's for the revenue side. Now if we look on the cost side, and again, we can speak to the broker in the room as what land is trading at right now, about $137 per buildable square foot. So we look at our buildable area and that's what you're, you're left with. CAC, so we are rezoning here. So this is a straight $6. So municipal costs are going to be a little bit higher than that based on rezoning application, DP application, et cetera. For our purposes right now, we'll say $6. Consultants are about $22 per square foot. Construction's at about $220 per square foot right now. Financing, as, so all developers finance their construction costs. So there are interest costs and commitment fees related to that. Marketing and commissions to market all of the retail space, office space and to sell the residential at about $12 per square foot. And then project management fees, so general contractors, development managers, et cetera. So right now, we're operating at a significant loss, which is fine because we have to tailor these numbers. We have to work. But I want to give you the idea of, this is how we look at a project. And this is where our constraints are. So, I mean, I'm open to, to questions at this point, based on what this looks like. You'll notice that the top floor is set back right now. And the only reason we can assume that is because the saleable area is less than what level four and five are at. So this, this assumes a one story setback. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thanks. That's really seeing everybody in the cornerstone pays 24 bucks a square foot. And in retail space.
In office space?
In office space. And crap for ground, for ground floor, retail space is now coming for 25 or more. Yes, there are tenants that have old leases in the downtown that are paying 12 bucks a square foot with long term leases. That is true. And maybe they don't want to pay more, but new businesses looking for space are willing to pay more and do pay more. Anything on high rate commercial pays 24 bucks a square foot.
Okay, so we've changed, we've changed it to reflect that reality. So it now is a $3 million.
And we can go for a perfect date here too. And let's say that, you know, by the time this is built out, this is something that we don't typically like to do because then we're, we're acting on speculation as opposed to what's the actual reality of the market right now. So yeah, we're looking a little bit better now. But those things have to become a reality also. Now, just for reference, and I know a lot of people think that developers are getting rich, 15% return on cost is what is required for the bank to finance a project. So they will not even look at financing a project if it's less than 15. Now that being said, in Vancouver right now, because of the land costs and the rising cost of construction, by the completion of a project, those returns are looking like closer to 10% right now.
So I'm just trying to accent, your land value, that is, that's sort of essentially what you paid for the land?
Land value is value as of today. So anyone coming into town today, that's what they're buying land for.
It's a $2 million piece of land, correct?
Pardon?
It's a $2 million piece of land.
Correct, correct.
I was going by the square footage.
So if someone bought their land 40 years ago, some of the landowners who have been out to speak at some of these downtown planning sessions, they didn't spend this on land. Their land number is considerably lower and they're going to have a better day than anyone who's coming to town now. But this is for reference, that any new developer who's coming to town, this is the challenge that they're going to encounter, especially because... that they're going to encounter, especially because they're assuming right now that six stories is what you're allowing. Whenever we buy land, we look at the existing zoning and it's a sure thing for us that we're going to be allowed to build a certain number of square feet. So, anyone coming to town who's saying, yes, I'm going to buy this land based on existing zoning, is going to be shocked if you say, nope, it has to be. And I don't disagree necessarily that a commercial building makes sense than having three different uses in a building. And maybe, you know, our architect can speak further to that because that creates further inefficiencies. But if you were to say to someone, well, you have to build all commercial, it's not as lucrative as someone building all residential. So, how do you pick and choose unless it's heavily incentivized like you guys are saying? So, that needs to be a major consideration. Because I mean, if you look at the ground floor, yes, it's, well, let's say that they're equal square footage. It's still 4.5 million versus the 5.1. If you said the floor plates are the exact same size, lease rate of $24. So, the residential-
Can you just explain the 550 floor space? Is that, what's that number?
That's per square foot.
Per square foot?
Yeah.
To purchase a stratum?
Correct. And this is, it's not actually 550 right now. It's closer to 500 right now, but I'm just playing with our ideal numbers. So, because we're going 25 for commercial, so we'll go 550 for-
And when you say lease rate for ground for commercial, you're assuming not selling it, correct? So, you're assuming-
Well, that's how the bank looks at it. So, you apply the lease rates and then you apply a cap rate to that. So, that gets you to the value of 4.5 million. So, in Squamish right now, if I were to build and sell a retail space that was already leased out at $24 a square foot, I would assume a 5% return. And that's how you come up with this value. Same with the office space.
Yeah. Now?
Okay, a couple of questions. So, the 220 a foot, is that's based on usable floor area included in? So, you're paying for public use or general use?
That's all constructed areas.
That's every area, every floor? And that's wood frame construction?
Yes.
Two levels of concrete because the second level parking.
Yeah, we've heard about that.
And what about parking? How many parking spots are you factoring in the factory by doing a car share or plugging? You might be able to reduce the number of parking spots.
Right now, we're short on parking stalls, admittedly. And we don't even want to get into that conversation at this point because we do want to get granular with yourselves to figure out how we make this all work together. But right now, as it stands, we want to take a look at the parking stalls.
You're allowing for complete level of parking?
We have 41 residential stalls, eight office units, two retail units and a total of 33 parking stalls. So, the parking as it stands does not work. But again, we're trying to get in that floor of office. So, how do we figure this out?
Have you looked, have you talked to companies like Moto about doing a car share and putting pluggings?
We have, we have.
To reduce the number of parking stalls?
And I know the district has as well. We've spoken to them personally. So, one of the options is that we can corporately purchase multiple vehicles and have them in there. We haven't talked about what that relaxation would look like, but that would be all part of the planning process as we move through.
And we have talked about it, comparing it to what's happening in Vancouver, four or five stalls per car share and we're trying to evaluate.
I mean, to make it work, you'd have to have multiple project developers get together and support so many electric cars in the community. I mean, that's the only way it's going to work compared based on other buildings.
Okay.
Karen, then? So, I've heard this idea before that it becomes more inefficient when you have mixed uses in a building. So, I'm wondering if someone could just expand on that.
Yes, our architect, this is Robert Secozzi.
Yeah, come on up. You can pull a chair up if you'd like. Please.
In a finishing, in a finish-
Hey, can you introduce yourself then?
Oh, sorry. I'm Robert Secozzi, Secozzi Architecture. The deficiency you're talking about is when you have two uses, commercial and residential, you know, you have your residential elevator. In this case, if we're asking if you're going up two levels of office, then with an office on the second floor, we need a commercial elevator. So, you have two elevators. And then also the loading, commercial requires loading, which is a big impact. But in this particular case, throughout Squamish here, I mean, it's quite a unique situation here. Well, similar to Richmond, you could say, where we have these soil conditions that don't allow us to go above ground, below grade. So, parking's a real impact in the massing. So, you're trying to fit all this parking. So, that becomes an inefficiency there because you're trying to integrate parking into your lower floor. You're trying to get, you know, retail, typically you want a minimum of 50 feet in depth, you know, 40 feet to make it work, you know? So, that, so you're fighting that along with trying to fit parking in behind it. Then you're trying to get loading back there. You're trying to get two elevator cores in there and you need your exiting out of those floors. You've got residential exiting, two staircases. You've got commercial exiting. So, it really starts to multiply. Typically, in a mixed-use building, though, we don't go two floors. We just typically have one floor of retail and then in a six-story case, five floors of residential above or three floors on a four-story where the staircases are an issue because you don't require staircases for the commercial. But, you know, to me, what, and so that talks about the inefficiency that you get with this. But, you know, what we're trying to do here is create, urbanize the Cleveland Avenue sort of thing. And, I mean, the success typically from a developer's perspective, you know, what makes a performer viable, a project viable is really the residential is what makes it viable, not the commercial. And so, really, your project's got to, it's got to work on a residential only and the commercial is kind of gravy if you can make it work. And, but from a planning perspective, you know, what makes commercials successful is critical mass, okay, is people. And so, that's why having residents near commercial brings that critical mass, helps the businesses, but also, it also opens itself up to maybe reducing the parking requirements because there they are, they're right there. They can, they can live there and they can go shopping within walking distance. So, that, so that may help us here. So, trying to bring in more residential into these urban areas, urbanization of Cleveland would really help support the businesses and maybe we can look at reducing parking requirements given the soil conditions here and the fact that we have to build up. I mean, Richmond is a good example of that. I know we used examples like Vancouver, Denman Street. Well, all that parking's below grade. It's not impacting massing. It's, you know, you go down as deep as you have to go to get your parking to work and then you got your commercial at the base and then some residential. And in the case of like Denman Street that was brought up, you know, what happens in Vancouver, there's a step-down massing. You've got your, you've got your residential areas directly behind the commercial that support the commercial, right? We don't, and in some ways, that's what's starting to happen here. You're getting those commercial, sorry, residential in behind the commercial. But having some critical mass right at the commercial is, would really help, you know, revitalize the whole street, bring vitality to the street. And that's need people at the street. But, you know, some of your ideas of closing off Cleveland, for example, I think that's a great idea because those short streets are, you know, sorry?
Winnipeg.
Oh, Winnipeg, I'm sorry. Cleveland, yeah. You don't want to close off Cleveland. Yeah, Winnipeg.
There's the headlines.
Those little short streets. So, really promote pedestrian over vehicular is, I think, is a real, you know, really starts to bring the whole core together. And from a massing perspective, you know, I, you know, what you're seeing in the backdrop of the mountains there, you see kind of a rolling thing that, you know, and, you know, whether we step up the corners or then break down the middle part and step up the corner again, or you start off at, you know, you look at Cleveland at holistically, you start to say, well, we've got this long, you know, what, four or five blocks of commercial, you know, do we start off low and then build up and then come back down again to create sort of a wave sort of thing? I mean, the city of Surrey is starting to look at that in their, in city central area. They'd like to see the wave ideas when they're talking up there. So, those, you know, I just wanted to add that in, sort of taking advantage.
How do they drop that rezoning? Get the wave?
Well, they basically, they do rezoning, specific rezoning for each parcel, right? But they have an OCP in place, sort of calling for those kind of densities, right? You know, transferring densities, you know, I was involved in Cathedral Place, actually. I worked with Paul Merrick on that particular building. So, I know all about that density transfer from the church. And yeah, that works, that works well, too. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very difficult thing to legally to do, though. I mean, it takes a while. But anyways, that said, I, but yeah, that's how Surrey does it, yeah.
Yeah, so quickly on that, so was it Richmond that, no, that spot zoning? Who did you say? Was it Richmond or Surrey that's zoning?
Surrey. Well, Surrey, no, it's not spot zoning. So, they're OCP, you know, they're official.
So, the OCP is giving the guidance, but they're basically zoning every floor?
Yeah, the OCP starts to lay out the plan, you know, where they want density. And then when a developer goes and buys a piece of property based on the OCP, they still have to take it through a rezoning process. So, there's, there's public input at the OCP level and there's public input at the rezoning level. So, it goes through two series of public input. And it works. I mean, city center is a really good example. City central is a very good example of that, you know, and yeah.
Susan, Jason?
Thanks.
Go, sorry, Elaine.
Just looking at Commercial Drive here. Commercial Drive is a perfect example of some place that is very important to the public that has gone through extensive community planning. They took the core, as Jason suggested, took the core, left it at four levels. So, four stories is where they restricted the zoning to. They left that center core as completely commercial. They marked off where had to have ground floor commercial all the way along and then they did a reverse thing. So, not a wave, but they left the core and the public corridors all as public spaces and commercial and employment land and made it into walkable speed, walkable streets. And then on the ends, had to have density on the ends of Cleveland, at the ends. And I would suggest looking at that ground view when money planned and seeing what they've done with all the public input and the street that was extremely important and needed few corridors. And they've got density all around it, but they've restricted that central street to four stories of commercial space.
Yeah, so I think it's actually really important that we be very clear about what the vision is because what this pro forma shows us and what has been already explained is that people are saying land values that are actually too high for what is actually buildable. And, you know, that's why the pro forma is a mess. It's a mess because people have these expectations that are unrealistic for their properties. And I just want to correct, with all due respect to my, our guest here, you're mistaken when you say that there's mixed use on Denman Street. There is no mixed use. There is only hotels. There's two hotels. Everything else is zoned strictly commercial. There's no, there has not been any rezonies. And it is true, you can do a level of parking underneath. However, a lot of them don't have that because it's just, it's too, too small of a footprint. But what you see in the core areas, all of Denman, all of Davy Street, it's very specific and it's very deliberate. The city has said, no, these are commercial corridors. These are commercial hubs that offer services for the community. We're not going to allow rezonies. And, you know, I would think that it is a very analogous situation because we are approving density all around this, this area within walking distance and customers will come. It doesn't mean that they have to live right on that street. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Jason. That was my follow-up. Yeah, we'll go to Elaine quickly and then-
I know the 2014 version of the downtown neighborhood plan, I think, Andreas, I think you were involved in it and I can't quite remember, but was there a higher density proposed for the corners for maybe an economic reason? No.
Not really, no.
Yeah, if you're gonna, speaker, you're gonna have to come to the table, Andreas. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the-
You're gonna have to sit, sorry. The mic will pick you up, otherwise. Thanks.
Yeah, the densities that were looked at on Cleveland, I think, were pretty universal along the streets and weren't changing at the quarters.
Okay.
We found those densities to be, to be quite low from a practicality point of view. Like the densities, I think, that were, that were proposed were around two stories and slightly larger than that. And, you know, frankly, I don't think anybody would ever build a building that's in economic to do it in, maybe in that kind of a framework. But I think this, this kind of proves it already, that larger scale.
I was just gonna mention that at Davy Street, I was just involved, I've previously spoke with a 22-story residential.
Right, in the core areas, so like-
At Jarvis.
From Jervis to-
So, Jarvis is on the corner of Jarvis. And there's another one going in between.
Yeah, down there. Yeah.
So, currently going forward, are there, Denman Street, still?
You couldn't rezone at Thurlow and Davy, what mixed use?
Within the, within the high street area, right, Jason?
Correct.
Okay, very quickly.
Yeah, go ahead. So, I think one of, in, for, to comment what you proceed, the problem is that people are looking at existing zoning and willing to pay $137 per buildable square foot based on what you don't necessarily consider buildable because of all these changes that are potentially coming down the pipeline. So, the challenge is going to be, are you going to downzone and the backlash that will come as a consequence of that, just as a consequence of people spending $2 million on a 14,000-square-foot site? So, that needs to be a consideration moving forward when any zoning changes are made because that's taken by any developer as gospel when they're buying land. Again, just a consideration for council as to how it's treated.
Yeah, and we look at buying up to land and we know it worth that much.
We'll build you a new municipal hall there. I've always said that. It's consideration.
So, can, do you want to keep my, just going back to your question? So, we're just running out of time a little bit and I think we've just sort of scratched the surface of this conversation.
Yeah, very quickly back to, I think the initial question was, do we, are we in a position to revisit the vision for Cleveland Avenue, which was two stories, maybe three? And the answer we heard is maybe, provided it's done in an interesting way and we can address the public space, the view corridors, the commercial space issues. And then the second question is then related to that, should staff explore the tools for regulating what happens on Cleveland Avenue? I think, again, what we heard is yes.
And I think the other thing we have to consider is parking. Because if I got the conversation correctly, it's a significant cost, obviously. There's minimal revenue, if any, that comes from it. And those are relatively confined parcels along Cleveland Avenue, relatively small. And we've gone and given variances and so forth in the past and said, no parking for commercial required and so forth. But there's a parking problem. If it's not there now, it's developing. And so, with respect to the speaker, I'm not sure that everybody in Squamish is going to be driving electric cars because a lot of them commute and we don't have transit for commuting and so forth. So, there's other things that factor into it for this area. So, I think we have to cater to it, whether we like it or not. And so, that means, I think, setting aside some vision for where public parking might be, parking garages or something like that, that developers could contribute to the cost of. Because it may, to make Cleveland Avenue work for what we want and what a developer needs, it may be that we're gonna have to compromise significantly in the parking requirements. And if that's the case, then we're gonna have to figure out, I think, another solution with that.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's, and I think we need to understand the pros and cons and I've obviously said, any parking we're doing today has to be, you might need to repurpose it in 15 years when some of these things, or 10 years or five years, depending on how quickly the automobile chemistry changes come around and repurpose those spaces to something else at some point. Keeping those in mind as we go.
Okay. Just briefly, if we're looking at things like density trading and that sort of thing, we have to look at the downtown as a whole. I know we're talking about the heights on Cleveland, but if you want to keep Cleveland in, as a commercial area, and this is the self-perpetuating problem, is that land values go up because you're speculating on building residential. But you allow those people to focus on commercial, but you allow the air height to be sold to someone on second or third or like, as Mark Barco was saying, those varied heights can be okay in other parts of downtown. And so, so allowing owners on Cleveland to sell their airspace to the residential people that we want in other parts of downtown backing away from that street. So, I think, even though we're talking about Cleveland today, we have to keep looking at downtown as a whole and how we want to look at it development over the long term. You know, there's opportunities for- You know, there's opportunities for different kinds of buildings through downtown, but I think that is our commercial high street and I don't want it to turn into a quasi-mall because the only people that can afford the rents there are Shoppers Drug Mart and Home Depot. That's not the town I want to help build in. I like who's downtown now. I think it's different than what's in our malls and I want to find a way to keep it that way. So I think we always have to be mindful that second and third are still part of downtown.
And, and they're there to compete.
And they're there to compete each other, so.
You said we were in thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
Okay, that was under a minute.
All right, Ted, last word.
Two brief things. Let's do a downtown neighborhood plan.
Oh, Jesse said Ted.
Just kidding. But I think a clause in there would be going after unique, you know, open it up and let the architects and developers be allowed to bring something unique forward and encourage that. And then everything that everyone else said, but I mean, if we encourage that and there's potential incentives for that, and like Karen says, extra height, otherwise we're gonna be revisiting your street again.
Do you have enough to go on to get us to the next conversation?
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we just take a four-minute break and we can begin at five. We are back in our community home meeting of May sixteenth and we're on item three two, Squamish Avenue's Change Community Impact Project proposal. Here, and welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Hello, council, everyone that's joining us online. My name is Sarah McJanet.
The masses.
The masses, hopefully. My name is Sarah McJanet. I'm a community planner here at the district and we're gathered with a number of community partners today to bring forward some information for council and the community about an emerging opportunity to address early childhood vulnerabilities in our community through the Avenues of Change initiative of the United Way of the Lower Mainland. And the district has been approached by partners to participate in Avenues of Change. Avenues of Change initiatives are most successful, as we understand from other communities, when all partners and agencies, including local and First Nations governments, are around the table. And the intent today is to share the community-based project proposal and get direction from council before devoting staff resources to participating in this work. So I'd like to do some introductions to start. To my right is Kim Winchell. She's Director of Social Impact with the United Way of the Lower Mainland. Welcome. To her right is Erica Branson. She's a social planner for the North Shore, See the Sky and Sunshine Coast region with the United Way. And then I have Philip Clark, District Principal of Learning Services with School District Forty-Eight. Suzie Somen, she's Director of ECD Services with See the Sky Community Services. I also have Christine Good. She's a clinical educator with Vancouver Postal Health in the Public Health Office. And last but.
Starburst, yeah.
Yeah. Last but not least, Mr. Paul Wick, who is new title, is Department Head of Education, Employment and Training. And he is also the active, acting Squamish Valley Administrator for Squamish Nation. Yes.
A role he knows well.
As you know, through our healthy community capacity building work in the last several years, the health authority, See the Sky Community Services and the early years planning table in Squamish or in See the Sky have brought to the district's attention childhood vulnerabilities. And after a decade's worth of early development instrument data, EDI data coming out of UBC's Human Early Learning Partnership that monitors the state of the young across BC and specifically within our Squamish neighborhoods, this data really speaks loudly to the need to come together to address vulnerabilities experienced by our youngest citizens. So what is the data saying? So we know provincially that, from the EDI data, that one in three children, this means about 14,000 kindergarten students in BC, are starting school with vulnerabilities in one or more areas that are critical to their healthy development. So the current provincial vulnerability rate is 32.2%. And I'm gonna speak a little bit more about what's going on for Squamish, a little later presentation. Across the province, vulnerabilities for kids has been increasing over the last decade. And we, we also know that there are vulnerable kids living in every neighborhood in BC. And so this has a significant social and economic cost, not only for school kids starting their education, but throughout their lives. And the Avenues of Change initiative came about to address this issue. The, it was launched in 2013. It's invested, Avenues of Change is invested, is investing up to $5 million over a five-year period in lower mainland neighborhoods where young kids are struggling. It involves a place-based approach to stimulate action and greater impact in local communities. And Avenues of Change has been deploying resources in, in communities in BC and has identified Squamish as a good candidate. Kim and Erica are gonna talk a little bit more about that. I'm gonna speak to the local context for Squamish and what the most recent EDI data says, just to give you a really high overview and touch point. Erica and Suzie are gonna speak to the partnership table and funding and project phasing and our involvement of the partners. And then I will close and open some discussion to our council at the very end. So I'm gonna pass it over to Kim next. And just if you want me to advance this.
Okay.
Or you can do it.
Great. Thanks, everyone, and thank you for having us today. We're excited to be here to talk to you about this initiative. I'm gonna, I understand you know a little bit about it from previous presentations, so I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail, but as Sarah said at the end, there's an opportunity to ask any questions, so, you know, please feel free to do so. And then I'm gonna talk a bit about why we think Squamish in particular would be a great partner for this, for this initiative. So Avenues of Change was spearheaded by United Way about five years ago, really to address the alarming rates of childhood vulnerability in our province and in the Lower Mainland. So much so that some neighborhoods, it's one in two kids start school not ready to succeed. And what that, as Sarah outlined briefly, what that can mean is those, those kids can have, they have less opportunity to graduate, they have less opportunities, they get involved in criminal activity at a younger rate and more frequently than their peers. People ask, often ask me, well, can't they catch up? Absolutely, they can catch up, but many don't catch up. Actually, many fall farther behind. So because of that reason, we really felt like we had to step in and we had to try something different. So what we have been doing in the past, as many funders do, is investing in wonderful early years programs, which do amazing work, but we weren't seeing a difference in the EDI. We weren't seeing children being less vulnerable. So we felt we had to take a different approach. And so to that end, this initiative has one goal and one goal in mind only, and that's to reduce early childhood vulnerability and to make sure that kids start school, more kids start school ready to succeed. So what does that look like? Really quickly, the, the approach is responsive and as I said, we are shocked and alarmed by these very high vulnerability rates in neighborhoods where there should be opportunity for kids and schools are open and social service providers are working extra hard to make sure programs meet the needs of families. It's an innovative approach. As I said, it's unparalleled in BC in terms of both, both the level of investment, $5 million in five neighborhoods, and also in the fact that we look at one neighborhood. So one neighborhood in Squamish would be chosen for this initiative if it went through. And it's courageous in that it's, anytime you do something different and we take a step towards something different, it is courageous. And it's courageous in that we ask United Way to show up differently, we ask our partners who are around this table to show up differently, and we ask local municipalities to show up differently as well. And I'll go into a little bit of some examples of how that shows up in other communities. So what does it look like? It looks like public partners and community agencies and families, key is families are the core of this, with young children all working together with the same goal. It looks like the community, all those partners, developing achievable action strategies that are measured frequently to determine whether or not they're working and course correct as we go. It looks like really going into community, talking to community, families that live there, young children, local government, those that know the community best and find out what is going on. What are the assets in that community and what are some of the reasons that are driving that early childhood vulnerability up? And then coming up with creative, innovative ways to address those vulnerabilities. So it's looking at policies, it's looking at service delivery in a different way that makes families and children more successful and ready to start school. So where are we? We are in Coquitlam River, so that's in the tri-cities. We are in Guilford West in Surrey. Avenues of Change is in the Richmond City Center. We are in Strathcona in Vancouver and we are proposing in here today and hopeful that we will be in Squamish either the north or the south. And that would be determined by, by the community that sits around this table and by families themselves. So, let's see about the next slide, I guess. So I can say a little bit, maybe if you just wanna go back to the other slide, about what's happening in those neighborhoods. So in Coquitlam River, it's a fairly middle-class neighborhood that when we went in and did with the community the consultation phase, which really is going in and talking to families with young children, talking to teachers, talking to municipal government, we found that there is a huge amount of isolation and disconnect there, that a lot of that community gets in their, goes right from their garage, gets in their car, drives to work, comes home, goes back into their garage, gets back into their car and drives potentially their children to activities, never to know their neighbors. Many of them, 70% of them, said that they did not know the name of their actual neighbor and they had lived in that community, in that house for over 10 years. So we brought the community together and worked alongside them to develop strategies that would address that isolation. And as you can imagine, that looked like some pretty fun events. That looked like block parties, that looked like they took back one of the parks there that had been overrun by drugs and crime. They, the, the community took that park back, the service providers, the families, they created Friday fun nights, they did all sorts of different activities. They also looked at their childcare, the fact that folks were driving out of community to get childcare. So they looked at their childcare and they did a needs assessment around that. And they have been advocating to the provincial government for more subsidy and more childcare space in that community and they have been successful. So that community has seen a decrease of eight, eight percent in their recent wave of EDI data as a result of that. In Guilford West, as you, as some of you may know, that neighborhood is, the poverty rate is one of the highest in the province. So a much different neighborhood, so their strategies have been different. They've been working very closely with the municipality of Surrey, who's extremely concerned about that neighborhood. And they've been working to make sure that that community is safe. So they've looked at walkability, safety in that community, they've looked at neighborhood blocks, different activities like that. Richmond City Center, for those of you who know that community, it's become a vertical parenting where children are being raised in high rises. Interestingly that you were just talking about some of those things when I walked in. So that has created a huge disconnect and isolation for families living there and they have a lack of green space. So the city has come outside to look at creative ways of working within the green spaces they have and creating other green spaces as well and working with developers. Strathcona in Vancouver, again, quite similar to Guilford West, is looking at safety, walkability, is looking at the indigenous population to see if they can provide some engagement for what those families are wanting and needing. So those are just some of the things, as you can see, each one is uniquely different because this initiative is really underpinned by the fact that it comes from community and every community is different. Even, I'm sure, I don't know Squamish as well, obviously, as any of you around the table, but I hear the differences even in Squamish North and South. So your action strategies would be vastly different because of that. So key learnings to date, we have seen a decrease in the EDI as a result of this approach. In fact, in one community, it went from 72 to 50. 50 is still horrendous, one in two, but it did drop drastically. It was the only neighborhood in all of BC to drop in the EDI. What it requires is a shared agenda and a coherent long-term vision. So everybody coming around the table to create that together and to have accountability around that. Why we chose Squamish was because, as you can see, you've got amazing partners here. We already knew that there was a readiness through the PCFI table and through the amazing work of See the Sky, but also through the fact that the school district, health, the nation, Squamish nation is all active in your community. We don't see that in other communities throughout the Lower Mainland. So the partners were here. It needs influential champions and strong leadership. Again, you have that in Squamish, you know that, you have that at a district level, but also out in the community as well. Sufficient time for strong personal relationships and trust to develop between partners. You already have a solid foundation of trust, but the fact that we are proposing a three to five-year investment, we're not, this isn't a sprint, this is a marathon and we're in this for the long haul. And if after five years we still need to be here, we will be here with investment. An alignment of interventions and resources towards a common goal. So as I said, this isn't about us coming in as United Way telling you the kinds of interventions you need in community. This isn't about the school district doing that. This is about a table that comes together and looks at innovative approaches together and all decides on those interventions and what will, and how those interventions will be invested in. And it really involves partnership process and structures and community engagement. So a governance structure, a table that will support this, a variety of different action strategies that will work congruently to ensure that we're maximizing impact. All of those things are key learnings we've had in the other four sites. And the fact that we have alongside our partners been talking about this for a number of months, I think, shows the commitment that all of you around the table and the district have to making sure that children in your community are ready to start school and have the best opportunity available. Really quickly, just a few things. When we look at the partners and you could see that they are represented here today. So in other communities, we have the municipal, local municipality is key to the success of this and they show up differently in communities throughout the initiative, but they are there. Ministry for Children and Family Development is there. Our school districts are represented hugely. Local health authorities are definitely there. Community agencies, they're the heart, as you guys know, of the work that's being done in, in your community. Business community, that shows up differently in each, in each initiative, but they are there to some extent. And then we have our local universities, so HELP out of UBC. We've also had SFU involved in our Guilford West project. And then SPARC, which is the Social Planning and Research Council of BC, and they provide our evaluation framework and our developmental evaluation, how we go about kind of course correcting as we go. So those are our public partners facing forward.
Thanks, Kim. So I'm gonna jump in here and just talk about why Squamish for a moment and show you some interesting data. What's the context in Squamish that makes Squamish a community of interest for Avenues of Change? There's two reasons, well, beyond some of the things that Kim was talking about, but fundamentally, we've got also a growing number of children and families.
Udols of children.
Yeah, u-dols.
U-dols.
U-dols of children that are making up an increasingly greater proportion of our population and two, we see the high vulnerabilities. So just to talk about the kids and families for a moment, in, as of 2016, we have 4,800 families in Squamish. Thirty-three percent of our households are made up of couples with children and this compares to 24% for the province of BC. We had just under 4,000 children enumerated in the 2016 census between the ages of zero and 14. So that means that kids zero to 14 make up just under 20% of our population. And that's not quite double the population of seniors 65 and older. And in terms of the growth there, we saw, you can see in the top slide there, you can see that, we saw a decline between 2001 and 2006 of kids aged zero to 14 of 4.3%, but then that rebounded and we saw an eight-point increase 2016 to 2011, or sorry, 2006 to 2011. And then a 16% increase in that age cohort in the last five years. Meanwhile, you can sort of see how that compares to the, the population change by broad age group for our working population in the middle, 50 to 64, and then our seniors population, which are, is increasing as well. And then you can see on the bottom graph, the current age profile and you can see that set, the segment. the segment of kids zero to four, five to nine, and 10 to 14. And as the census data is coming out too, we're looking at going back to the numbers and just showing the increase in the zero to five age group because that's even more dramatic in terms of the increase. So as I just touched on a little bit of the EDI data, I just wanted to highlight in our snapshot that for council's information, the dividing line between the EDI neighbourhoods is the Mamquand River between north and south, so that Mamquand River is just important to keep in mind if you're trying to spatially think about those two neighbourhoods in Squamish, even though we have many more neighbourhoods than that, but for the EDIs. So this slide actually shows the EDI in the latest round of data collection for the school district, so all of C2Sky. So this includes Squamish, Whistler, Pemberton, probably Britannia I think, Phillip too would be included in here. And you can see that since the first wave of data which was collected 2004 to 2007, the school district or C2Sky has seen increasing trend in vulnerability. And you can see that the greater the vulnerability, the darker the colour, so you can see this across the five different developmental domains on the left. But particularly notable is, are the increases around physical, social, emotional vulnerabilities. When you look at Squamish specific, oh and here we are on the far right that you can see wave six, so that was 2013 to 16. This is hard to read, so I have a second slide that shows it a bit more clearly, but for Squamish specifically, you can see, if I can bring my cursor in here. Oh, there we are. So you can see the dividing line Mamquand River here and you can see vulnerability rates across one or more of the five developmental scales. For Squamish North, it's 32% in wave six and Squamish South, it's 38%. And these rates compared to an overall vulnerability rate for BC of 32%. Over the long term, from wave two to wave six, and I should say wave one I think was, I remember that it was thrown out because it wasn't statistically robust, so the tracking is wave two to six so far. Over the long term, across the waves, Squamish North has seen a meaningful increase in vulnerability, while there has been no change for Squamish South. So you can see on the left-hand side, so for Squamish North, the current vulnerability rate is 32%. It actually, sorry, one second. You can see the increase with a little chart on the lower left-hand side, you can see the meaningful increase over time, whereas for Squamish South, even though it dropped in the last wave, you can see it's sort of been a sustained rate of vulnerability over this time period.
Hold there, hold there, please, I'm sorry. On these steps.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the age of the kids.
Yeah, so this is a tool, yeah, it's a tool that measures kids aged five, so as they're.
Just age five.
Yeah, so it's sort of a snapshot and it doesn't, it's a, it is a population level tool and snapshot, it's not necessarily following like the same kids.
It's a snapshot. And it's the same as what we've got.
And, and you can see with the arrows and the coloured chart at the bottom, you can see the, the top three there, just around the physical, the social and the emotional scales in terms of what the number of vulnerable kids that were picked up in the last wave. So in the last few years, the health authority, the ECD planning table and others have discussed and speculated on what's been causing these vulnerability rates and we can continue to do that, but really it's only until we actually work with the community and deep dive on this that we'll actually better understand the causes and then from there we can look to, to find ways to resolve and intervene, to build resiliency and more protective factors across the community. So I'm going to turn it back over to Kim.
So to date, we've probably been out in Squamish, I mean, we've been out for a while, but with Avenues of Change in the last nine months, just, just talking to partners and trying to assess out what the appetite is for this kind of initiative. And so of course we started with our community partners, that's seemingly who we know best, and then went to the district. So right now, we've got the district of, no, sorry, we've got the Squamish Nation, Ministry for Children and Family Development, School District 48, Vancouver Coastal Health, C2Sky Community Services and other community agencies that may come forward through the consultation phase and the business community and the district as all potential partners. As you can see around the table, many of them have already confirmed their interest and commitment, but those would be the primary partners moving the initiative forward. So what does the funding look like? What's the investment from United Way? So we have reserved funding for Squamish, we are very interested to do this here. It's a three to five-year commitment, says four but it's five, so three to five-year commitment with a maximum investment of just a half, of a half a billion dollars in this neighbourhood over five years. It's difficult to lay out what that investment's going to look like without doing the community consultation phase first to find out what is driving the rates of vulnerability and what are the interventions that are needed and how much does it cost for those interventions to happen. But that is our financial commitment and just like everyone around this table, we have a lot of in-kind commitment that comes with Erica, Erica's role and our role back at United Way. So where are we at in next steps? So right now, we're at the first phase which is community readiness. What we learned from our last projects or our current projects are that it's important to spend a great deal of time making sure the community is ready for this type of initiative. It does require folks to show up differently, to think differently, to go beyond their mandates sometimes or what they traditionally believe in, so it does take that readiness. And we want to make sure that everybody is aware of the initiative and has the opportunity to ask any questions. So that's where we are right now, bringing public and community partners on board to take action on, on childhood vulnerability. The next phase would be the discovery phase, which I think is so exciting, and that is really about bringing in a person or people to come together to do a deep dive in, in the neighbourhood, to speak with families with young children, school districts, service providers, anybody living in that community to find out what are the assets in that community and what is the potential challenges for young families in that neighbourhood. And it's interesting because we've seen that being done from a very, somebody asked me, I think it was Sarah asked me, you know, who does that? We've had SFU do that in one neighbourhood and then we had a resident champion, if you will, do it in another neighbourhood and both with successful results. And then action strategies would come out of that discovery phase. So what's driving up the vulnerability and then what interventions can we put into place to test, if you will, hypothesize whether or not that would make a difference? And then how is that scalable? Because this is obviously just one neighbourhood in Squamish, you have many neighbourhoods, so how can we make sure it's scalable so other children can benefit from this initiative? And then implement, so we go through the action strategy which is a bit like a business plan and it's a back and forth with United Way and all the partners around the table to see where we land and then implementation, and implementation is, implementation of the action strategies with, with solid evaluation and course correction all the way along. And that, and we are seeing that even now in the five, fifth year of a five-year initiative, they're changing some of their action strategies to better meet the needs of families and children. So that's what it looks like and that's the next steps from our perspective.
Great, thank you, Kim. So I just want to clarify for council too that no additional budget or request is being made of partners beyond the commitment for in-kind staff time to be involved in a partnership table. And so with that, we did put forward a recommendation to participate in this, in this work and this will be open for council's consideration and review. So the, the recommendation that, that was drafted, that's attached to the council report, is that the district of Squamish should commit to participate on a joint community partnership table with C2Sky earlier's table, including the United Way of the Lower Mainland, School District 48, C2Sky Community Services, BC or MCFD, Vancouver Coastal Health and Squamish Nation as part of United Way avenues of change initiative in Squamish. Thank you for your time and we look forward to that for us.
Awesome, thanks. I'll get to council in a second. Karen, then.
Okay.
Stephen. So just, I want to thank you very much. I know when the EDI report first came to council a couple of years ago, it was a really hard pill to swallow to realise that collectively, it's not, it's not one entity's responsibility, but collectively, we weren't servicing or paying enough attention to our youngest citizens. So they become successful humans throughout life and contribute in the best way they can. So when we saw that trend, particularly in the north, it was actually getting a little bit worse. It was sort of okay before or not okay, nothing's okay if you have any numbers in that EDI index, but it was trending in a negative direction and the south really wasn't improving. It, really I don't think we're succeeding unless we're dealing directly and we're targeting this issue. So when I saw this report and this opportunity come forward, I just thought, this is great because we always want these tangible things that we can work on to actually, you know, when I saw that first EDI report, I was like, what can we do collectively? What can the school district do? What can we do to make our public spaces feel safer or more integrated and more inclusive? So to have something that can actually sort of put the rubber on the road, I think is so valuable for our community and to do it in collaboration. I think Squamish, just sort of to give the case for Squamish, and I'm sure this was part of your analysis, I think Squamish is an interesting case study because we can, we do have sort of some big city influences and issues, but we, we can also be a bit of a help for communities, smaller communities or more resource-based communities or communities going, going through transition. And, and I think about the last 10 years and the, the transition that Squamish has been going through, that may have influenced some of this uncertainty with the EDI. So, so I think, I think we make a really interesting test studies and I really look forward to launching this. I mean, I think this is absolutely fantastic. I'd like to actually see, you know, as we go through this, I know we don't necessarily have a budget request for this year, but if there, if there are learnings in those first couple of years where we can confidently say, this is something we want to replicate in, in the north or the south depending on which, when we choose that we act on it and we get that information early, I love the benchmarking program that looks like comes through this so we can actually track the progress more completely throughout the years as opposed to sort of waiting for the next one to come and, and going, why didn't we do anything? It's not changed. So the scalability of that, I think, is really, really helpful. So I mean, I'm gung ho for this, I think this is great and I think council's been looking for that thing where we can actually sort of ground truth it and really work with it on the ground and we can't do that without partners like United Way and C2Sky and the school districts, Squamish Nation and all, and everybody. So it has to be a collaborative effort, so really welcome, welcome to both of them and with councillor Elliot. Okay, one of you two.
Thank you. So I, I think I have two questions is, as Patty said, when the EDI results came to us first time, I was totally shocked and unaware. So one, do you think our community is mostly unaware how, what our stats are and what that means? Like I think most parents think their kids are ready, is my, but I'm interested in your opinion. And also too, what is the process for deciding north versus south? Like what are some of the questions you'll be asking yourselves to make that determination?
Do you want to answer the first question? So I think as far as do parents know, some do, some don't. Still even in the childcare world, we see three-year-olds that don't talk and so parents didn't realise there was an issue until they came into childcare and then that support happens and that is the same with kindergarten. So you know, what those numbers are, we can't say for sure, but we definitely know that there's children out there that need our support, that need help in one way or another.
So communication out there was, like actually getting this information out there anyway? And then the second part was how, the criteria for determining, are you leaning towards one or?
So it's, it's really a community decision. United Way has no vested interest whether it's south or north. So what we propose is, we have a workshop coming up on June 8th where we're working with all of the partners around the table to understand the, the different components of avenues of change and we're bringing in the other sites to share a little bit of their learnings that could be helpful. And then we propose a, a process whereby all the partners come around the table and we look at a little bit of what are the strengths of each neighbourhood, what are the differences, where is, where is there more opportunity? We look at that, where is there more concern and, and we try to have a consensus for, for what neighbourhood. We've had a few partners come out with, we really like this one and we really like that one, so we, we just try to bring everybody together and have a conversation and it's the first part of really communicating all the way along with this project and communication is key. So that, that is, the table will decide and all the partners will decide.
First, I just wanted to thank you all for your dedication because that's the key thing that drives you here and your focus on us and it's unfortunate the rationale that brings you here is, is state of the condition of the kids in this town. And I, like Karen and the rest of council, I was kind of shocked when I saw how the waves had rolled out and how dire the situation was, but it's funny because I work, my kids are, I went through kindergarten with them, they're in grade two now, so I spend a lot of time and I volunteer in the schools and I see, you know, those, those cases where some individual kids, you can tell if there's something going on and they're just not getting what they need and whatever that may be, you know, it's, it's different in every case. But I thank you guys for coming and it's definitely an exciting program and I'm looking forward to being part of it and to watch it roll out. And yeah, thanks. And one thing I wanted to suggest was your exploratory pieces, perhaps we'll be seeing if some of the Quest students might want to be involved with you. You'd said you'd use U2C or SFU before, but I know our students at Quest are always eager to help out with initiatives in town.
Fantastic. That's what I was thinking when you mentioned SFU. That's a great opportunity.
Thank you. I am always loving anything that's helping with city planning. I'm also interested, most of the things you mentioned are good planning principles and from a healthcare perspective, having a group that's involved in the school district, daycares, everything else, gives us a different perspective and allows us to look at our planning of our town. We already know a lot of the issues in town. I was also concerned until I looked at the list, there are only three communities that are doing okay and even those communities that are doing okay are doing poorly. So if every community in BC is doing poorly, then I start thinking, what are the measurement criteria? Are you measuring too strictly? Is it some sort of high standard? Because every community in BC measured between 28 and 41. So if every single community is doing badly, do we not have access to parks? When, like it's that lack of collaboration in healthcare? I, you know, like if you shut up in every community and said, well, you're at 40, you're at 40, you're at 40, you're at 40, that's meaningful and you start worrying about it until you look at every community in BC who are all poor, all doing poorly. So is it daycare funding? Is it things that we don't have control of, that we can't actually fix with policy or fix with our things? So that's what I'm interested in looking at. I love the measurements, I love the look at policies that we could have hacked and I love that you said course correct as we go. Because course correct, that is looking at it from that perspective where you have hypothesis and may be wrong, but you can look at it as a, as something that's maybe right or maybe wrong and that you can course correct as you go, is really important. But I'd like to bring it to the attention that it's not Squamish that's doing poorly, it's BC that's doing poorly and we have an opportunity with United Way and our partners to actually course correct and I appreciate that.
And, and ideally that you glean information that is valuable to everyone.
Yeah, thank you. And as others, others have said, you know, when you read this, it's a bit of a reality check, I think, otherwise might think everything is going swimmingly in your neighbourhood and it really isn't. The question I had though, when you talk about neighbourhoods for the study of north versus south, are you talking about the whole of Squamish North as a neighbourhood and Squamish South as a neighbourhood or just portions of those for the study?
The way we look at it is we use the EDI neighbourhoods, so however the UBC EDI neighbourhoods roll out is what we, because that's what we can measure with the EDI. We also, to your point, use different measurements, you know, reduction in social isolation. So that would be a question for you, Sarah, is that? Because I'm not as familiar with Squamish as.
Yeah, and maybe can I pile on that and then you can answer it?
And maybe can I pile on that and then you can answer it? Can we drill down in the EDI data to be more specific about where specific neighborhoods in the model are going? So Sarah, Karen?
Yeah, so my understanding, and you know, I'm not the, I'm just getting to know this data and the metrics and all that, but in terms of the two neighborhoods, like north versus south, I think we would, you know, definitely look to, one or the, like, look at, to maintain the EDI neighborhoods so that we can track it consistently over time, knowing that there are many sub-neighborhoods within sort of the northern, like the northern part, portion of the East and the southern part. And there is subscale data that comes out with the EDI as well, which is coming out for April 6th. We don't have it yet, but it's being developed.
We're still on the other side.
Yeah. On that, yeah.
What is Revelstoke doing well?
Revelstoke's an interesting community, yeah. I've been there. They're small. You know, they have, they are extremely small. So everybody knows everybody, which is beneficial. And they have, or they had a very strong, a few very strong champions within the school district, actually, who just said, we are going to change this, come whatever, and really stepped into that and held people accountable. So when I said, you know, we need to have local leadership, that is very true of Revelstoke and the fact that they are quite small, so they can sometimes mobilize much quicker than more of our larger, complex cities that have lots of different departments working. So there is some uniqueness there, but there is a lot to learn as well from Revelstoke. So, but a big thing is, is the local champion that goes forward. And they have some really exciting action strategies that play out in their neighborhood.
They also don't experience the childcare crisis that most of the rest of the province does. They have enough spots for the children that need it and it's quality care. And that's something we've been jealous about for a really long time.
So I'm happy to move this motion. And Councilor Chappell seconds. I think we've spoken to it. I think we're really excited about this. Council is committed to this. We want to come back in five years and have both north and south trending and up there with Revelstoke in terms of really addressing the issue. So appreciate everyone coming and contributing. And I guess the first meeting is on June 8th?
Yeah, there is a motion.
Great. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Close, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You'll take a formative. Good afternoon. We are in the 20th home meeting of Tuesday, May 16th. And we are on item 33, which is our Economic Development Action Plan. And our EDO Kate Mulligan is in the house.
Thank you, Mayor Heinzchen and council and those that are watching online. I'm Kate Mulligan, the Economic Development Officer. And this presentation is to summarize a draft of the District of Swamish Economic Development Action Plan, 2017 through 2019. And it's meant for your feedback, for information and for your feedback. So I wanted to start off with where we are going. And it really sets the premise or the foundation of the action plan. And this action plan is premised on a collaborative framework. Its success is dependent on an all stakeholders approach to economic development. And it's recognized that the district cannot go it alone in terms of sustainable economic development and that the role of the district, to a great extent, is actually to support the roles of other economic development stakeholders within the community. The hope as an outcome of the plan is to encourage community-led and owned economic action plan and health indicators dashboard. The plan will also work to provide an evidence-based approach to our people, business, and place needs. And out of this, the plan will facilitate new and innovative programs, tools, and resources for the local business community. Often plans are focused on what and how, but the goal of this plan is really to make sure that it's focused on why. And the why really sets the foundation of the plan and the work that we will carry out over the next three years. It's meant to align with council's priorities and community's vision. And it's also, it's also there just to be our guiding principle as we move forward. So the why is to increase the quality of life for all community members with a focus on all. The idea is inclusion. The plan also works to define the mandate of district economic development. One of the things I noticed in a review of the work that's been done to date, coming in with a fresh perspective, is that it wasn't really clear exactly what our job was. So I spent time looking at, you know, what is a district's role? What is a municipality's role? And through that, I also looked at what partners, what role they play and what their mandates are. So throughout the development of the plan, I kept that in mind and I worked with internal departments to create a mandate. So to work with the local community, its partners, and other levels of government to support sustainable growth of the local economy. And specifically, that translates to supporting a vibrant and profitable local economy, promoting Swamish as a place of business, supporting a collaborative relationship between private and public sectors, and providing information in support of a healthy local economy. So this not only helps clarify our role for ourselves, but it also helps clarify the role for our stakeholders, as well as prospects to Swamish. So what does this translate to? It helps us strategically position the community for economic growth. It allows us to work with the business community to ease business constraints. It allows us to provide expertise and tools to local business. And it means that we're going to liaise with our business community and government to support policy and programs leading to growth opportunities. Ultimately, it supports the vibrancy of the existing business community. So the plan lays the foundation and framework for district economic development. One of the things you won't see in this plan is specific mention of sectors to promote or specific details in terms of what the initiatives look like in detail. It's more laying that sort of foundation and application framework that then we can move together as a community to actually create those work plans. And it's premised on existing district plans, stakeholder consultations, as well as a review of the current operating environment and best practices in economic development. So throughout the development of the plan, our department looked at the official community plan, the one in progress. And we've also looked at the council strategic plan. We've looked at district strategies and action plans, whether that be the employment land strategy. And we also undertook consultation with stakeholder organizations, local stakeholder organizations, as well as the province of British Columbia. I'm just going to do a little bit of a dive, but not too deep a dive. One of the things that I recognized in the development of this plan with the team was that we're kind of lacking some data at the local level. And I know we have the census coming out and that will be a useful tool for us to be able to make informed decisions. But one of the things that I'm hoping to achieve through this plan with the team is to actually be able to bring in more local-level data into our evidence-based decision-making. So as part of the plan, one of the first steps was to actually look at the global context and how that actually impacts on our local economy and what are those implications moving forward. So looking at it through a pestle framework, so political, environmental, social, technological, legal, and economic, looking at it from a global scale and what that translates to. So for instance, political, right now in the world, we're seeing rising tensions and greater instability. What could that translate to for Swamish ultimately? Well, we could actually see trade being affected in terms of our ability to trade with other markets. And that will have a direct effect in terms of the growth or productivity of existing businesses in our local economy. Environmental, extreme weather events can lead to long-term changes, I think I should say long-term change in health. But extreme weather events can play a significant role in terms of opportunities for business as well as detriments and considerations for businesses as we move forward. Shifting demographics, one of the things that the world is seeing is that our mature economies are seeing an older population emerge while our younger, sorry, our less mature markets or economies are actually seeing a rise in the working class. What does that mean? Competitiveness. And it also means that we might have a shortage in terms of labor. So there's lots of considerations out of global context that have been applied to the thinking within this plan and the framework. And this is just to point out a few of them. In terms of local implications, a little bit of a deeper dive, you know, we're actually still kind of facing political uncertainty in terms of our provincial election and what the impact of those changes may have. And that can have a significant effect in terms of policy and programs that are offered by government at the provincial level, also our relationship with the federal government and the programs and the funding that is offered there. Affordability concerns, it's definitely not secret that we have affordability concerns in our province, in the lower mainland, and now in Swamish as well. So what does that mean? That translates to higher wage demand and inflationary pressures as we move forward. How are we going to grapple and deal with that and still maintain sustainable economic development? Another important consideration is that small and medium-sized enterprises are actually leading growth in our province. And we need to pay close attention to that. So the former large-scale businesses of yesterday, we're actually seeing now microbusinesses leading the growth within the province. So how do we manage that and facilitate that growth within our own community? And I think Swamish is a great example where we do have lots of microbusinesses and that are highly successful. So we need to look at how do we develop that and make sure that those businesses continue to grow. Demand and supply issues, slower growth. So there's several different implications that are arising out of our context, our operating context, and all of those need to be taken into consideration when we're developing what our outcomes should look like, what activities we're undertaking from an economic development standpoint, and how we prioritize our growth. So building on the considerations, the potential applications for economic development, the feedback through consultation, as well as best practices, the following summarizes the framework and activities district economic development will undertake and support over the coming three years. And I want to stress the word support. By no means does district economic development own all of the activities. It's a partnership approach and for success, we need collaboration. So adding on to the why, the district will take a coordinated approach to sustainable economic development. So coordinated with its partners in economic development, the plan will work to ensure sustainable economic development. And that uses a triple bottom line approach to development in terms of considering the environment, social, and economic impacts of potential actions and activities. And this actually really aligns nicely with the OCP, a council's strategic priorities in that it's not just considering the bottom line, it's considering the trade-offs that we have in terms of our social, environmental, and economic impacts. The plan has three foundational pillars of people, business, and place. And the idea is that all three pillars must be supported to ensure sustainable economic development. The people pillar focuses on ensuring that the local community has access to skills and training to meet local employment demand and that there is an adequate and diverse supply of local employment to meet the local community's needs. The business pillar focuses on ensuring there is sustainable and diverse business growth, that it is, that local businesses are becoming more productive, innovation is supported, and the local economy is not overly dependent on particular sectors or markets, and that there's a diversity of sectors and markets supporting the local economy. The place pillar is focused on ensuring that people and businesses are supported with both soft and hard infrastructure. So for example, employees and employers alike have access to housing, affordable housing, transit to and from their place of work, and that our local community is connected to the regional, national, and global networks. From there, there's four primary core activities of the plan. That's to partner, prioritize, facilitate, communicate, and advocate. And dependent on those pillars, we play a different role at the district in terms of our support. So in some cases, the people pillar, we maybe don't play an active role in training, but our partners do. And so we help facilitate that, and that is our role there. And also to communicate and advocate with other levels of government. Under the business pillar, perhaps we have a more active role to play. Perhaps our tools and information can better serve business. The data collection that we do and analysis can help inform decisions of our local business community. And with the place pillar, while economic development isn't going to undertake the planning work, they'll work in conjunction with the planning department. And I see this very much as an integrated process, as well bringing to the table other experts and stakeholders. Priority activities in the near term.
What are you saying there, Kate?
Priority activity. In the near term, district economic development has prioritized its work plan. So this work plan is heavily dependent on successful partnership, as I mentioned before, with our economic development stakeholder groups and local business community. The near-term work plan focuses on setting the right conditions for growth and working to make sure our foundation is strong as we build for tomorrow. So right into the work plan, which I'm sure you probably want to see, the idea is that those core activities are always supported by our prioritized work plan and that the three pillars are supported in the work that we do. The first priority activity that we'd undertake, basically starting today, would be the establishment of a Swamish Economic Development Steering Group. This steering group would be at the staff level and it would be comprised of economic development organizations or stakeholder organizations. And that would help guide our work, our strategy, and the development and implementation of activities. Through that, the goal would be to actually create a Swamish economic development plan. And that would be a community-owned and led plan. And we would also create an economic health dashboard that would help map the progress of the work that we're doing. The dashboard is meant to be, is meant to be informing and help us steer our strategy as we move forward. From there, there would be several activities that we would work on and the district would have a varying level of involvement. However, we would facilitate the work that was getting done. So that, under the various sections, could involve anything from a skills inventory analysis to communications, a communications plan for economic development, to a framework for a Swamish Business Accelerator, to prioritizing our infrastructure improvements for successful economic development. So there's a variety of different initiatives and activities, all of which we would work to facilitate, but not carry out all the work involved. The goal would be after the three years is that we would be in a place where we would have an economic development plan that's owned by the community and that then we would build our district economic plan from that plan. So, and that I would hope that other organizations, should this initiative be successful, also build their economic development portion of their plans through that. That allows us to have one common goal, work towards the same outcomes, and also be able to prioritize our work and hopefully be more efficient in our delivery. So the timeline right now that we're proposing is that complete the action plan, create the steering group, create a measurement dashboard which will be built on and reviewed and as time goes on, create a key account strategy. That way we could prioritize our work and where we're going. And then there's, within six months, create a connect-place plan that supports infrastructure development, a communications plan for economic development at the district. Nine months, create a business accelerator framework. And that is not meant to be a physical bricks and mortar business accelerator. That's actually a program to support local businesses and their growth and productivity. Undertake a skills assessment to see where we have a labor gap. And then within one year, we would continue with our digital progress report out of the digital strategy, also have an economic development progress report to see how far we've come and if we need to retool it all. And have a skills connect Swamish plan out of that skills assessment to be able to actually tackle any of the labor demands that we're facing or skill shortages that we're facing. So that's the timeline. It's aggressive. I think it's going to take the collaboration of all the organizations to be fully implemented in a year. However, I think it is doable. In terms of managing risk... In terms of managing risk, spent a lot of time looking at the context, the implications, and how we are actually mitigating those against the plan. I'm not going to get into each detail in terms of risk mitigation. Just wanted to point out that the plan's been thought through from the perspective of the what-if scenario. And ultimately, the goal is to take us from immediate outcomes of more people are trained and locally employed, that there's sustainable and diverse business growth, that infrastructure meets the needs of employees and employers, to actually, what are those proxies to actually see that change? Average wages are increasing, productivity is increasing, and that the rate of job participation, and I think notably among priority populations, is a great indicator to actually see we're moving the needle, meaning that we're looking at youth, we're looking at more vulnerable populations within our community, to the ultimate outcome, which is Swamish, which is a little bit pie in the sky. But I think it's one that helps us stay true to the goal, which is Swamish is on a path of sustainable economic growth, increasing the quality of life for all community members. So with that, that's the end of the presentation. There are more specific measures that deal with the outcome of the plan on page 18, which has been provided as an appendix to the plan. But the idea is that we now have a broad framework to undertake the work that we need to do in terms of activities and initiatives. Thank you.
Thanks. Kate, I have Councilor Chappelle.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, Kate. I really like that you included a global perspective. I really think that the amount of migration that we're going to see is not even, you know, we don't even see a portion of what's going to happen because of climate globally, of people migrating to a place that actually rains. And that rain will actually be tourism because of the amount of heating globally. The demand and supply thing, I really think that we create a lot of oligopolies from bad land use planning. As you can see from today, the conversations we have are in isolation. You know, discussing height without discussing economic development really makes no sense to me. And the lack of space requirement. I've been working with a group to develop an economic accelerator program, Hub, for two months now. We've been having meetings, and we can't find any space. So we can't do it until a space is built. Literally, we have to wait years for a space to be built, to have an accelerator program. So by the time you're done your plan, maybe we'll have some more space development. I wonder where the BRE plan went. Local businesses, build most of the jobs in all local businesses. I know 10 different local businesses looking for space right now because we've all grown out of our space. So I have deep concerns for the economic development of our community. And I'm really happy that we have somebody else looking at the global, local perspective. I worry about doing a whole, we already just went through a group that invited experts to the table and developed a plan. And I'm not sure where that plan sits in all of this and the BRE plan and all the plans we already have, and why we need a whole new plan. But if it gives us a better global perspective of what's to do, I see the biggest preventative is not having something for commercial space.
So I'll let Kate speak to this. But when we brought the New Deal pitch on, that was Kate. The intention was to take the review that was done the last time, the BRE program, and task it to the New Deal to consolidate it into a real strategy and action plan. And that's what Kate presented today. So in my understanding, this is a consolidation of those pieces and is very strategic and pointed in its steps. And the gaps that are needed in terms of what's out there for land, what's out there for buildings, what's out there for information, data on census and skills and what's out there on demographical change as the baby boomers age and, you know, we, and it'd be interesting. The piece before talked about the decrease in the amount of working, the age of the demographic of workers. Lots of kids, lots of seniors. We're getting fewer and fewer workers in the community. So there's all sorts of pieces, and this was supposed to be a consolidation. This is beginning, this is Kate's acknowledgement.
Kate, did you want to speak? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, actually, the plan is really to set the review into action. One of the things that I, through the review of the review and action plan in the fall, was that it was very, very specific, and there was lots and lots of information. But the one place where I thought we could maybe elevate the strategy was by providing maybe more of a framework. And the reason being is that there are so many stakeholders that are involved in economic development. And we are really facilitators at the district of that work. So to be able to provide a really strong foundation and framework for how to approach economic development, I thought was really vital. Through the information that we've gleaned from the review, as well as consultations, as well as, I think, the mayor's breakfast on the 18th, where we'll also consult with the public, those will be the foundations that we're bringing forward to the steering group. And I want to stress, the steering group is really to, is an action group to actually be able to initiate a lot of this work. And the idea of bringing the local organizations at the staff level around the table is that we can be, so that we can be nimble and actually make things happen rather fast.
Thank you. I have Doug here, Jason.
Thank you. I hadn't actually thought of tourists coming here for the rain, which I guess would maybe be like going to Tefino to watch storms. But we can work on our brand.
Six percent warm rain.
Yeah. Reading through the report, and thanks for this. One of the questions I was sort of left with, because over the past few years, we've kicked around the idea of having a separate economic development entity versus having that in-house. And I didn't see any reference to that, not a recommendation today or at some point in the future, we might try to address that issue. Do you have any thoughts on that one way or the other?
Yes, I feel like at this point, it's really, really early on in the game to actually say whether or not we should have a standalone economic development function outside of the district. I think that the form, the formation of the steering group and then the work plans from there will help really determine the way forward. I think once we have a community-owned economic development plan, it'll be quite clear how it has to be facilitated and how it needs to move forward. So I think, whether I have a feeling about it personally, I mean, I like my job, I'll be honest. But I think that right now, laying the foundation in terms of the structure and approach and framework is a first step to arriving.
Just to comment on that, and it was not with the idea of doing away with you.
I didn't think that way.
Of having a lateral transfer to another entity. And the reason, or one of the reasons that was tossed out over the years for doing this is to allow more community involvement, which I guess partly accomplishing at least with this committee to start off with, getting people outside of this room to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thanks. Jason, tell us.
That was a very authentic presentation. Thank you. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again in present company. We're glad we have you. Thank you. A great document. I like that you took some of the pre-existing documents and kind of dusted them off and shook out what didn't work and what did and kind of reconsolidated, as Patty said, to arrive at this. It's, it looks good, it reads well, and I know it's still in its draft form, but nicely done, your data, terrific. And I appreciate that you included the digital strategy in there.
It's a better template.
Thank you.
Jason.
Yeah, I like this strategy. I think it's really well balanced between, you know, looking at people and then looking at business. I think that makes it much more stronger. And particularly on the issues of skills training, I do think that there is definitely some room for us to advocate for that because I think we've actually suffered from a decline in availability of local resources. And so anything we can do to help meet the labor needs here and allow people to pursue studies beyond high school locally, I think is a huge benefit. And perhaps maybe even talking with some of the, you know, career counselors at each of the, you know, basically at Housshead Secondary, find out what are some of those gaps and how we might be able to close them. And also, what would be useful, I think, for us as a district is having more data on our moderate and low-income households that are in the labor force. You know, we always sort of say, you know, like service sector employees, but having a very good understanding of like the numbers, you know, how many households are in this situation. And because what that will allow us to do is, again, from an advocacy perspective, go to the province and get those resources, you know, because in some cases, we will need public resources to help with the housing situation. And then the last thing, and I think it must be related to the key account strategy, but I'm wondering, maybe you can elaborate a little bit, how that looks in terms of separating out business growth associated with residential population growth versus, you know, really stimulating growth of export-driven, for lack of a better word, propulsive industries, which we probably would want to really focus on because some things grow just because we grow as a bigger community. But other things are very, maybe you can elaborate.
Absolutely, Mayor, if I may. You're exactly right. The key account strategy is meant to be able to prioritize our growth. It doesn't mean that we're trying to prevent businesses from operating necessarily. The idea is to be able to look at our resources. We don't have an infinite amount of resources. So we need to be able to actually prioritize them. And the idea is that we look at, first of all, what sectors align at our federal, at the national level? What sectors align in terms of priorities at the provincial level? And then what is the composition of sectors here in Swamish? And what would we like that to look like in five, 10, 15, 20 years? How do we then support that growth? One of the things that economic development, the department, is seeing is that we're constantly getting inquiries. And with each of those inquiries, there are things that we need to do right now in the department to be able to actually handle them more efficiently. But we also need to be able to evaluate them, understand their value overall. That doesn't mean we won't provide the same level of service to anybody that comes to the district. It just means that we'll be able to understand where the district is going in terms of growth and how various stakeholders, organizations can support it. So the key account strategy is meant to prioritize those inquiries coming in and as well existing businesses when they want to grow to make sure that we understand sort of what sector approaches best serves the community.
Yeah, and just one more thing on that. And I think, much like Counselor Chappelle always reminds us, I think we can do a better job overall as a district in refining our land use strategy so that we are, you know, tailoring it for those types of businesses and then making sure we don't have disproportionate incursion from, you know, the more retail sector or residential sector.
So I have Ted, Karen, Susan, and Doug. And just want to invite anyone in the audience to come on up and share your thoughts.
Thank you. I know I must not understand economic development, and I never have because I've been going to economic development meetings right here for 20 years. Even longer, over six steering committees. And, you know, a lot of things are discussed. I'm more action-oriented. And so when you started saying we're going to form a steering committee, I started getting into a cold sweat there, thinking, oh my God, here we go again. I did, you know, I do like to comment on government relationships. I think that's a good thing for economic development, to keep our relationships open economically. I kind of was hoping also, not also, but, you know, I liked the standalone economic development model that, you know, we looked at last term. And that was kind of where I was hoping we would go because I think that when the district starts creating steering committees and inviting sectors from the community in to sit around the table, we've done that a lot, and we've been always weak on the action items. You know, I see Eric here from the forestry sector. And we had a really great meeting with the forestry guys last week. And for 20 years, forestry has been asking for some kind of guidance and direction from the district, 20 years. And it's just never panned out. And they were always, they're actually our probably number two job creator in the whole community. And we haven't even figured out how to connect with them. And so, you know, like I say, when I see steering committees, I'm going like, oh, oh my God. I can just see the lunches and the people sitting around the table all excited in the beginning. And then after eight months or a year, members will start dropping off because they feel as though we want to talk and no action. So I'm on to the action items. And so when I saw some of the things on there, like skills and training, when we talk about skills and training, let's not talk about it, let's go get it. You know, like, why invite a steering committee? Why not just go after that? Make that, make that an action item. We're going to go after the high schools and the people that have employing people and get our kids skill training. So that's an action. It's not a comment for a steering committee to discuss. You know, like coordinated approach. And, you know, like we really never did in the whole presentation say all the district's going to do is set the table. Economic development's really up to the community and the stakeholders. We're just going to have the meetings. And I'm afraid I've sat through too many of those to be excited about what I see. And so I was going to just keep my mouth shut, but I couldn't.
No, I think that's worth maybe getting Kate to speak to because I don't think anyone wants to committee this to death. But we also know we can't do this alone. And we need to make sure we're getting inputs from the community. So like, how do we assuage Counselor Prior's concerns and perhaps some of ours that we're not going to just commit this to death?
Absolutely. And, you know, I'm definitely not all about committees. But I recognize that there's no way that the district can play a role under every pillar and actually implement all of those initiatives. It's not our role or our mandate. So we have to rely on our economic development partners. One thing about this steering committee is that it wouldn't be made up of sector-specific membership. It's actually made up of membership by economic development organizations. So Community Futures would be an example of that. Work BC would be an example of that. Chamber of Commerce, Downtown BIA. And they would be bringing the sector focus into the room. When we're working on particular initiatives, an example would be the key account strategy. We would be inviting experts and sector-specific experts into the room for that conversation. The idea is actually to fulfill a work plan, not to discuss it. It's actually to develop, what do those programs actually look like? And how do we get the work done? And if I may, later this evening during the regular meeting, one example of the work actually getting underway right now is the application for the VC Real Dividend. And that is for partners, stakeholders coming together to actually develop a skills training program and deliver that in, over the next two years. So we are serious, and I have met with most of the stakeholders, I think with the exception of one, organizations to actually talk about getting things done.
Thank you. Karen, Susan, Doug, Matt, Eric.
Thank you, Kate. And thank you for putting this framework together and positioning us and our role more clearly. I think that just makes abundant sense. And also that we have a vision about increasing the quality of life. That's been missing. So my question was about who was going to be on the steering committee. But my second question is actually about how that key account strategy gets developed. Like, how do you identify those key accounts? What data goes into that? Whose input goes into that?
So for the development of the key account strategy, it's considering the council's priorities and the OCP. So actually, I've set up a sort of a preliminary framework of what that could look like to bring forward to the steering group. But it'll be evaluating also, you know, the employment that's going to be coming to Swamish as a result or the growth requirement. The actual land requirements and zoning requirements. So those are all considerations. And ultimately, along with others, a score is produced that basically helps us prioritize those businesses as they come through the pipeline. But also, before that step, those individual businesses, the real work has to get done also understanding our sectors and where the real growth opportunities present. And that is initially looking at our alignment to provincial, national, and global. And that is initially looking at our alignment to provincial, national, global economies and then what are local economy, what is unique, what is our unique selling proposition and what is Squamish set up to be able to actually act on?
Susan and Doug.
Thanks. I'm interested in where business licensing fits into all of this, it's not really addressed in the plan. And we have opened data now, so I've looked at our business licensing from an open data perspective and you can see that our economy has tripled, which might be a good thing unless you consider that it's all building hoses and none of it's building businesses. So I'm just, you know, I have the same concerns as Ted. When we hired an economic development officer, I was super excited to go through our plans and not come up with another plan, but have a liaison for businesses to work with on business licensing, on space requirements, so that we can inform our development community who are worried that they're not going to lease out space somehow, that there are businesses looking for space. We don't have a repository like that, so it ends up being local businesses that do the work and we have to find each other in corners. And, you know, an accelerator program is a great idea, but it's not sustainable. You know, we're all visiting spaces globally and looking around and seeing how it's done and how it's financially viable. And building business doesn't seem to be a problem in Squamish. We've got innovative, new, smart people, a young generation coming up, but if your land use doesn't support businesses, that's all you have. And as Jason said and as I harp on all the time, it doesn't go anywhere, you know? And today I thought, man, I'm just going to put forward a new zoning, one where we don't have a commercial, plain old commercial zoning, so that somewhere in our OCB, we can have commercial development. I want height in the business markets in the center of our community. All these basic economic development ideas that I have gone to school for and studied are not being implemented because we don't have people at the table being lobbied, we don't work with the chamber, we don't work with anybody. So having an economic development officer, to me, is where the value lies, in helping local businesses, not in developing more plans, not in integrating what global resources are doing, but somebody to look at our data, keep on top of our data, notice what's going on in economic development and collaborate with the community.
And I think that's exactly what Kate outlined.
Exactly. What Kate outlined was starting a steering committee and we're, you know, doing another plan, it's going to be ready in a year and as well as having those implementations, you know, just having read, you know, having read the plan and trying to dig it, dig into it as a business, I think what's available to me, nothing is available to me as a business. I don't even know, we don't even have online business licensing. Like we don't even, we can't even go online and do my business licensing. So it's, I just, I have trouble with, like Ted, I feel the same.
And you can hear a bit of the cynicism. I think we're trying to be very optimistic because I think we're on a great path, but there is cynicism because we've been down this path before and it's kind of petered out, so we're looking for a real dynamic program. Doug, and then Matt and Eric.
Thank you. And one of the other thoughts that occurred to me listening to the comments, and Susan just touched on it, is it may sound kind of elementary, but define economic development? Because I think depending on who you get on a steering committee, you can find a lot of people from the development community who will think economic development or encouraging economic development is doing things like streamlining or rezonings and so forth. And I got into a long discussion slash argument with a developer about this one time because once you build residential condominiums, for example, you spend a year and a half of employment and then there's zero jobs and zero commercial taxation after that. So you can argue whether that's economic development or whether it's longer-term jobs, but you can easily get sidetracked because it certainly is an economic activity in this community right now. Construction, development industry generally employs a lot of people, I'm sure, but is that really the goal? And I know you said you're not getting into sectors and so forth, but I'll just caution you to be watching that one because from my perspective, it does not constitute economic development.
If I may clarify, when I say I'm not getting into sectors, I mean within the framework delivery here. When we're going to move into sectors is when I actually work towards those initiatives and programs and the prioritization of sectors.
No, I understood that, but you're not getting into sectors.
That's right, yeah. Thanks, Matt and Eric.
Okay, I'm more of a taking the business side of this. So from a business perspective, I'm a business owner or builder, a jobs creator. So how does the process in your mind unroll or unwrap? I want to come here, I want to do some business in Squamish. For example, I'm working with a greenhouse company now, they build very good greenhouses. They would need housing and they would need space. So how does that look to you? Do you actually go out and do you have an active side that goes out and actually approaches various ideal businesses that we would like to see here? Or is it more of a passive role where people then approach you and then they say, okay, this is what we're interested in, what can you tell me? So how does that look on, you know, on a rubber and silver type basis?
I think that's a great question and I think that that's something, I think what's missing, I think for a lot of people is sort of the practical implementation of the plan. What does that actually look like in a year from now? So one of the things that I recognize is our tools that we have available to existing businesses or businesses that might want to relocate here, what's available online in terms of information, how all the processes work together from planning to economic development to development permits, all of that, I think, probably needs a bit of a review and a refresh. I think that our website can provide a lot better resources and tools. We are lacking in data. So once we actually start solving some of those issues, and I know that Councilor Chappelle was mentioning that, you know, how is this going to assist me today tomorrow from a data perspective, if I may? That's one of the first steps, is actually getting our shop in order. So as a prospective business or a business that wants to grow, the district's role isn't to be a real estate broker for, you know, other realtors in the community or take that job away from people. But what it's there to do is to be able to provide the services that it does offer in a really clear, efficient manner, so ease business constraints. And from a planning perspective, that we're considering what land needs to be available to meet future demand and capacity within various sectors. So that's from a planning, infrastructure development standpoint. So some of the work that economic development would do would be to work closely with planning and with the various sectors, looking at the data to be able to make sure that we're planning those zones and the size of land that we need to have available and also at the same time, considering the social and environmental impacts of those decisions.
Just, so do you see your role as active going out and actually going out and meeting, and trying to attract, may not even be aware of Squamish yet, or would that be more the auspices of an independent agency that Doug talked about, an economic development corporation?
I feel my role right now and the department's role is to get our shop in order for existing businesses, the existing community, make sure that we're setting the right conditions. That's where I see the role today. If everything's working and everybody's happy and with which, you know, there's affordable housing and we have all the infrastructure in place and we're serving our local business community well, then I think the role would probably drastically change. Whether that's an inside or outside agency, that boils, that boils down to a community act and what we actually can do, as well as it boils down to council's vision.
Thank you.
Eric?
I have a, excuse me, a couple of questions arise from your presentation. You have a, a graph at the top is link to local government priorities. What is the source or source document for those priorities? Is that the council's strategic plan?
That's right.
Second question I have is concerns of terminology. Our Chamber of Commerce has done membership surveys three times in the last six years and land and premises constraints is at or near the top of the list each time. It's also prominent in the survey work done by Dan McCray, predecessor a couple of years ago. However, land is not mentioned just once, it comes up in your scorecard, but the term infrastructure comes up throughout your report. It's, for example, the operating environment of Squamish also comes with a share of challenges, notably affordability, labor and infrastructure pressures. So my question is, that term infrastructure, does that include land and premises?
Yes, it does.
It does. I think that's.
We think it clarified that maybe in the report.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ted?
Well, thanks. Karen did ask, almost asked a question about the makeup of the steering committee and I don't think I did get everybody on that.
Sure. Would you like me to clarify?
Yeah, go ahead.
So actually, I have a whole separate deck that I don't have with me, that's about the composition of the steering committee and its mandate. Primarily would be economic, local economic development organizations. So the composition right now is to be invited, of course, to the table is the Downtown BIA, the Chamber of Commerce, Work BC, which is back in motion, Community Futures, keep going. I'm just trying to think about who else is on the committee. Then the Province of British Columbia wouldn't be in like any sort of voting capacity, but they'd be invited to liaise at the table, the manager of economic development at the regional level, so the chamber.
If you don't have it, can you send that out please? And, and it'll be evident on the website, can you send it out?
Yeah, there's, there's about 11 organizations in total, including DOS representation. Oh, planning is another from internally, inviting planning to the table.
If you could just send that out and then make this.
Yeah, absolutely. And then record it.
Great. So you're not looking for any motion at this point? This will come back, the, the plan will come back for Council to ratify at some point? Is that, is that the plan or is it an interim?
The plan was to garner some feedback and then produce the final plan to present back to council.
Great. Awesome. Okay. Seeing more hands, I thank you very much. And I am going to adjourn the motion to terminate by Councilor Lee, second by Councilor Prior, both in favor. Most motion carries.